Councilor Jensen.
Here.
Councilor Morgan.
Here.
Councilor Orville.
Here.
Here. Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick announcement before we get started, we have agendized the opening for city council members. That'll come out in our next week's regularly scheduled meeting, just for everybody that's interested or curious. Thank you. Addition or allegiance to the agenda? And just number four, oral communications by members of the public.
Mayor, we skipped number three additional materials.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. We received one additional material relating to tonight's agenda for item six A was included in the agenda packet. It's available for public review and was provided to the city council before tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Goran Klopich. I'm a army veteran. I served overseas. What I learned in the army back then is to be truthful about certain things. And right now there is a huge case pending overseas at the moment. It's about the rapper Puff Daddy. There were sex allegations going on at that point. I was a police officer overseas when we were watching cocaine trafficking and prostitution trafficking. And today at the Capitola Library, I saw a black prostitute from Santa Cruz talking on her phone. I was hesitating for a second because I almost walked over to her to choke her out. But you're not allowed to do that because I'm not in service anymore. Let's keep it that way, you know, to keep the police force on its toes, what is happening. I call sometimes from Jade Street Park because I don't see graffiti signs. There are gang signs because they are marking the territory for drug distribution mainly. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you all.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, I'll bring us to staff comments.
Staff, this is one comment. Today we have a vacancy at our museum board meeting. Anyone who's applying to be a museum boarder, apply on its website before the 13th.
Thank you. Council comments.
Sure, I did mention this last meeting, but it's Saturday and your first U double issues car show event. And the village will make it to see that. Also, public works has begun slowly closing the cliff. So that will be lovely soon. So here's coming. Excited.
I'm just looking forward to the food truck Friday event Friday night and nothing else to report.
I just want to say congratulations to our city staff for receiving the operating budget excellence award for this budget. So yay.
Kudos for that. I'd just like to say something about National Police Week. A good time to honor our police departments and all of law enforcement. But the work that they do is very difficult, hard on the families. So it takes the time to thank our police officers, our sheriff's officers and everybody that works out there. And take a moment to think about the fallen heroes, the ones that haven't made it home. And think about their families too. Thank you. That'll bring us right to general government. Our public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're going to kick off this budget presentation a little bit differently than we usually do with the pictures of our city doing what it does. Pictures here of our wharf, life barns, with our wonderful events, officers out there doing the job. Again, these are, I think, Capitola Capitol. They're the things I want to continue to throw and build upon as we look forward to our next year. And it's all thanks to the staff. You know, we have an amazing team here at Capitola. These are just a few of our main events, community events we've done this past year. There'll be a quiz, we need to see who can actually communicate and tell everyone if anyone's right. Okay, so our budget is across. This is something we've already, and where we are right now is we published the bad draft budget on May 2nd. And this director presented the official draft budget advisory to be on May 13th. Today is the 15th. It's the overall budget and opportunity for council questions. The next little budget hearing is on the 29th, where we'll be doing coming over the CIB budget. All of the questions that we're leaving for this evening, then receive back information. And then we have traditional budget during schedule in June, the 18th is needed. The goal is to have the city council up the budget, the June 6th hearing. As a reminder for those of you, for those of you who are newer, June 6th meeting, very often the busiest end of the year, just to be being of the last day before the summer break. So historically, we tried to start early, also an opportunity for some of our staff in those who are here at five o'clock to be able to sit in and watch the council meeting. So we're still looking at that and maybe getting it revised if it's possible to happen earlier to the 26th. And we will see what the agenda looks like as we get closer. So with that said, we thank our finance and the department head for all the work on the budget. It's a lot of work every year, a little bit together. Jim, I think he's certain, right? It's a nice shift, so they, you know, you get that much easier. Each time it'd be like, yeah, there's challenges that you have each time. So thank you, Jamie. With that, I'll turn it over to my next chair.
Thanks, Jamie. So I'll start off with just kind of a summary within the proposed budget. And so on the revenue side, we have budgeted increase of about $1.6 million of general fund revenues. And I'll go through what those are in a few slides, but we are keeping our eye on the national economy and all the uncertainty there. Making sure if there's any impacts that we're kind of adjusted to that. We've actually ratcheted down one of our estimates on sales tax from what we had started when we first, before we even published, we had started with a higher, a higher percentage increase in sales tax, but we've brought that down. And this budget also includes the new measure Y money that was passed last November and it's being utilized to provide public safety and essential services. We also have two new revenue sources, measure Q and measure S. Both of them are restricted. Measure Q is going to be $200,000 annually in perpetuity or until the voters reverse that. And measure S is $165,000 annually for the next 21 years. And I'll break those down a little bit more later as well. There's also about 106 million, sorry, 1.6 million increase in general fund expenditures with 1.3 million of that related to personnel costs. Primarily from the passage of measure Y as well as the CalPERS UAL. The proposed budget is balanced, structurally balanced with an estimated ending balance of June of, actually that should be 2026. So there's our first type of tonight, of 588 with an additional, 588,000 with an additional 100,000 set aside for the employee down payment assistance program. As a reminder, ongoing purse costs remain probably our biggest threat, major threat, one of our largest. We do have a reserve, a purse contingency reserve with $1.6 million balance in it. However, unfunded actuary liability or UAL went from 35 million, 33 million to 35 million, which is up from 21 million in 2024. And our annual payment increased this year from, will increase from 2.5 to 2.9, which is up from 2.1 just two years ago. So $800,000 annual increase in just two years. We continue to rely heavily on sales and TOT tax. And with measure Y just becoming effective in April of this year, it will run through the end of 2034. Our reserve balances are currently, we're projecting to end the next budget year below the target balances. But we still have about $800,000 of stored damage reimbursements that we're trying to get back from FEMA and CALOES. So we have a plan for how to get the reserves back up. So this is our multi-year, five-year, multi-year projection with the percentages that we use for our estimates on revenues. Property tax across the top, 5%. Those go up kind of 2% a year automatically just from Prop 13 and then additional 3% is due to the turnover of properties and those values resetting. The sales tax, as I mentioned, we're only projecting a 1% growth right now. And that's consistent with what our HDL, our sales tax consultant, we met with, I think that was just last week. And so they had adjusted theirs down at the same time. But then they show the growth coming back. We have that in there. TOT, we're showing 0% growth for this year. TOT is kind of leveled out from, or actually come down a little bit, leveled down. And it's due more to the reduced room rates, not occupancy. So it's still active down there. It's just that as the pandemic and people went back to their normal travels, the room rates came back down a little bit. Building permits, we had a lot of activity last year, so we're holding that flat this year and then back to our traditional growth. The cannabis business tax, again, that one during the pandemic shot way up, so we had adjusted up. And now that it's coming back down a little bit. And we also had one, we have two retailers in town. One of them was closed for the last few months of last year. And so that brought the revenues down, but we have a new operator in that location. And our prior operator changed locations to what is a more visible storefront. So anticipate that picking up a little bit, but we think that that's the right number there. Parking, we have flat. We had increased our parking rates in January of 2024. And it'll probably be four or five more years before the Cola makes that like a 25 cent increase rather than increasing parking rates by cent each year. We'll probably do it every seven or eight years or so. Mall redevelopment, I don't have anything in there right now, but we are still in conversations with the mall owners. So hopefully that changes. And then we have new revenue. There's a couple of things that we're working on on the economic development side that could potentially come online this year and then as well as next year. But they're still really early, so we haven't included those in the budget, but we are noting and tracking those as potential future revenues. Next slide. So this just shows total revenues and expenditures for general fund and then the net impact. So you see the first two years are structurally balanced, but then it gets out of balance going forward. And that is strictly due to the CalPERS UAL and what the projections are coming from there, from them. They earned, they try to earn 6.8% and base kind of their projections off of that on their investment return. They earned 9.3% last year, so I'm hoping that these come back down. It doesn't always work that way, like we think it should, but that's kind of the hope right now and that those numbers look a little better the next time we, once our actual report comes out in August. Next slide. And this is just a general funds summary showing the major categories of the revenues. You can see taxes are our major revenue source, followed by charges and services. And then, and then the others kind of fall in licenses, permits and fines and forfeitures. So a little over $21 million of total revenues, offset by almost an equal amount of general fund expenditures. Very typical since public agencies or service industry that are, most of our cost is in personnel. So as far as revenue growth forecast for the main categories, property tax with that 5% is 164,000. The sales tax, and that's our Bradley Burns, just our general statewide sales tax is 62,000. But our two district sales tax with probably 95% of that coming from measure Y or the measure ever measure Y that those taxes stay here. The new taxes I mentioned, measures Q and S, franchise taxes are increasing. And I believe that's due to just increased utility costs. And then charges for services are increasing and that's primarily due to moving some of the art and cultural events that they did into the community services and recreation events. And then there's some enhanced additional events that are going on. And then that's the same thing. You'll see the other revenues reduced. That's where I used to account for the art and cultural stuff. So general fund revenues again expected to increase 1.6 million from the prior year. TOT kind of flat, again, I've already touched on that, I guess. Sales tax, 46% of our general fund and TOT 11% represent over half of our general fund revenues with sales tax being almost a full half. Our top 25 sales tax generators represent 70% of that and our top five represent 39% of that total. So you can see if we lost one of that top five, it would be a major impact to the city. And then I get asked a lot what the village does on the whole. So it's 8%. And to be clear what that area is, it's basically from the trestle to the ocean. We have a different district we call the upper village that accept gales and Nob Hill and the Shadow Brook and everything that way. And that's about another 8%. Property tax, I covered that as well as charges for services. Next slide. So these are just our revenues by category. Again, taxes, 80% of our, or almost 80% of our general fund revenues. And then charges for services at 12 and then the rest kind of fill in the balance. Next slide. As far as our taxes, you can see that over half of our tax revenue is sales tax, followed by property tax and then TOT. And the sales taxes, both the Bradley Burns as well as the two district taxes. And we do, as part of our TOT, we have a portion, three quarters of a percent that's restricted and split between local business groups and early childhood and youth programs. And this is showing in green what's going to the local business groups. That's currently split between the BIA and the Capitola South Chamber of Commerce. And then the blue is the early childhood and youth programs. And the majority of those funds are in our community grant program going to early childhood and youth program nonprofits. Next slide. On the expenditure side, the big changes there, personnel, 1.3 million, 3.5 million. And again, it's measure Y, CalPERS UAL, and then as well as we had labor negotiations last year. So we have negotiated cost of living adjustments and then employees. We have a lot of younger employees now that are working through the steps, right? We have a little bit more hitting from step increases than we used to have when everybody was topped out. All the others combined are up 263,000. We have contract services and ISFs up a little bit, but supplies down for the 1.6. As far as the personnel, the salary full time, 361, that's due to the Colas and the step increases. Overtime is primarily in the police department and I will let Captain Ryan go through that when we get to the department discussion. Specialty pays are also measure Y related and the longevities when we reset what the longevity timeframes were. Benefits, some of those are related to measure Y, but the majority of that is related to the CalPERS UAL. And then also wages and part-time seasonal is increased 30,000. Those are non-benefited positions. And then ISF, you're right, Jamie, I can't read this at all. This is expenditures by department with police being our largest department at 38.5% followed by public works. Personnel, you'll see a big chunk there and I will explain what that is, but a lot of that has to do with the CalPERS UAL that I keep harping on. Next slide.
Do you have any more to add to you?
Yes. As far as expenditures by category, again, personnel, 69%, that's pretty normal for a public agency. And then followed by contract services. A lot of those are nondiscretionary services that we're going to be going through at the fact meeting next week and looking at the contract services and compare, looking at which ones are discretionary versus which ones are nondiscretionary. So we can bring that information back to the council on the 29th. And so restricted special revenue, this is kind of a new slide. We usually don't talk much about special revenues. So I wanted to just kind of show we have a lot of different buckets of special revenues. As far as what we have for roads, which is measure D at the county, SB one at the state level as well as gas tax, it's 936,000. The gas tax is about 280 and is mostly like maintenance stuff where the remainder is more like street work, road improvement stuff. Restricted TOT provides $65,000 of youth funding. The business assistance includes the restricted TOT. And we also do the accounting for the BIA. So the BIA is included in that. We have housing revenue coming in this year into the housing funds of about, this is, I think, three or four different funds, $300,000. And we'll have a balance around 2 million that can be programmed out for different housing programs, of which I think are already in the works. We have other, all the other special revenues that are in that category. There's probably 10 or 12 other funds total, 423,500. And then we also have some grants that are pending that we anticipate or hopeful come in this fiscal year. They're not included in the budget, but there's about four or five million dollars of grants that we feel pretty good about for this upcoming fiscal year. Oh, and then up in that far right corner was the measure S or measure Q, I'm sorry, restricted money for parks and open space. And this is a summary of our staffing. It shows the last 10 years and then a comparison back to fiscal year 2000, 2001. I have some highlighted numbers up there and typoed each one of those numbers in your draft that you received was one number too high. 750, 750 and 670, that was incorrect. So it'll, I've corrected it, it'll be corrected in the next version that you see. But in the proposed budget, we're proposing two additional positions that we'll touch on a little bit later as well. Next slide. And now I think I turn it over.
So one of the things before we go into the department goes, I did want to touch on a couple of the points to make. Because of you, I don't need to for a long time, people may have heard this before. You know, when we talk about our revenue mix, we spend a long time, Jim and I, worrying about it because we license fully on fees, taxes and TOT. And those are, we can go and say, I can see, there are two of them are all the taxes, well, the sources that the city can have. The most stable force of property the city can have is property tax. My mic is falling out. Just getting a little further back to see. So Capitola is helping relatively handle all of those taxes lately, which has its advantages because we have many capital than in other ones. But the disadvantages, whether you can have up turns and downturns, it can be disproportionately affected. So it's just something to keep in mind, it's something else in the city, something Jim and I focus on a lot because of what we're making next. We are particularly, we're making economic, economic. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chloe and lead us into the next section.
Can you hear me okay? Thank you, city manager and mayor and council. Just very briefly reminding you that council did adopt our next five-year strategic plan, which included six specific priorities. And those were considered in the preparation of this budget by each department. You'll notice as we go through, thankfully, it won't be me speaking the whole time. Don't worry, our department heads are going to present and the goals for our coming year are organized by priority. So we'll have accountable government, attainable housing, community safety, economic opportunity, healthy family, community and environment, and sustainable infrastructure. You'll see all six of those, several within one department as we do can be seen to fit in multiple priorities. So we just wanted to make sure to acknowledge the work that you did in selecting those and that they were considered in this year's budget. Thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and start us off for the city manager department. We are a small department, but we kind of work everywhere within the city as an internal service as well as a public service department. And so some of the accomplishments that we got through in last fiscal year, first and foremost, the city council election. Back in November, we had an election for two city council seats. Then early in the year, we had a city council vacancy, so we then had to make an appointment. And we did onboarding for all of those different appointments and elected offices, as well as a lot of work goes into updating, making sure that our city council candidate packets and things like that goes, is up to date and current and helpful to our candidates. As well as the election and the onboarding efforts for them. And we did have enhanced public outreach efforts during the last budget cycle. The city council approved funding for translation services and enhanced public service outreach. We had social media platforms that published many social media posts over the last fiscal year. We have a bi-monthly digital newsletter that goes out to quite a few subscribers. We did conduct one in-person tabling event during the 2024 Twilight Concert Series and staff plans to do a similar event with like a miniature outreach plan for a potential small civic government outreach informational series to members of the public that we'll be hosting this summer as well. In addition, during the last budget cycle, the city council approved funding for digitizing department forms for both internal processes and members of the public. We did increase a lot of efficiency by doing a lot of digitizing. We made forms for almost all of our internal practices with a lot of help from different departments like HR and finance. And we have made a lot of processes digital for members of the public as well, which makes things easier and more consistent and a bit more polished for the end result. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chloe to go over some of the next accomplishments from last fiscal year.
Thank you so much. So as I mentioned, you did adopt the strategic plan, which included new mission, vision and value statements. Those are all updated and included on our city website. We initiated the annexation feasibility study. I hope to be able to provide an update on that study in the next couple, maybe month or so. Not myself personally, but our HR team and our city manager recruited and hired six regular employees. We've maintained if not totally zero, but very low vacancy rate. When we have someone move on, hopefully for the best, we are able to recruit and hire for that position very quickly. I'm very proud to say that and we'll have a presentation about that specifically in June. We've enhanced employee engagement and we've had five kind of key seasonal events, although there are four seasons, so I'll let you think on that. And a few other things here and there. And I'll let Jamie say the last couple here. Thank you.
Another thing I brought up is is being able to do two important promotions, two positions in the city. Both, okay, we'll try a different mic. Both, please chief Ryan as well as deputy city clerk. Is this any better? Okay. And in addition, we have negotiated new leases with two of the key tenants that we have in our city facilities, both on the wharf, Capitola Boat and Bait, and then Capitola Beach Company who operates out of Esplanade Park. Their surf lessons and surf rental business to continue to provide those services in the community. Looking ahead to next year, we have even more ideas to increase and improve citizen participation. Julia mentioned a little bit of sort of trying energy that council member Jensen mentioned of sort of mini academy, trying to fold that into some tabling and some outreach around some of the summer twilight concerts. Improving and updating the city's website. It's been a couple of years since we've done that and I think there's definitely room for improving. We've talked a bit with the council about updating the bylaws and the Muni code around our advisory bodies. I think that there's a lot of room there to make some improvements. We're definitely targeting getting that done next year. And then as always, we try to go through our admin policies and bring updates as appropriate. We're looking at improving transparency. That includes a whole bunch of different ideas, both including trying to make some improvements down here to the meeting room. As well as expanded access to, help me out here, Julia. She had a long list.
So many ideas, I do. I have so many ideas for this room in particular. I think it's really important to improve accessibility to public meetings by making more options for accessibility. Whether it be improved technology for public meetings, both in this particular council chambers, but also in our community room where a lot of our city advisory meetings are held. And improving accessibility to materials online so that people who can't attend the meetings have a way to understand what went down at the meetings after the fact. down at the meetings after the fact or before they happen. Improved ways of providing public comment for members of the public who can't attend our meetings, whether it be submitted written comments or otherwise. There's just a lot of different ways that we could try to reach our community better, further translation services. And as we enter the next election cycle in 2026, we want to make sure everything's in place for improved accessibility for our public.
Thank you. So another change that we're going to talk a little bit more about is having a hundred percent of Chloe's position allocated into the City Manager's Department. We'll be talking about that transition and reorganization a little bit more later on here this evening. Key goal is working with the Capitola Mall. You know, I know that's been a key goal and something we've talked about for a very long time. We are making, making some progress. We have them engaged at this point, which is a new step since the pandemic. They have not been engaged. So we're hopeful that we may be able to move something forward there. The annexation feasibility study, that's something Chloe mentioned earlier. The goal is to complete that, which is really just looking at the feasibility. Our sphere, as council knows, extends all the way to Twin Lakes. Whether or not that's an appropriate sphere for the city or not, that's what Lafco asked us to study. And so we'll be taking a look at whether there's any feasible annexations out there. Then we've talked a lot in the past about advocacy for youth and e-bike safety. We in fact met with Senator Laird's office today and we had meetings set up with both Assemblymember Pellerin and Addis' office to talk about some of the ideas the council wanted to suggest for legislation to help improve e-bike safety for youth. And then we are coming up on our three-year community grant program cycle. That's, we will be, have the opportunity to talk about it or answer questions if council members have questions about it. But historically, we have done three-year grant cycles to allocate funding to nonprofits into the various sort of community priorities that the council can establish. Correct. Yeah, correct. Yeah, that was probably just a little bit quick. So with that, do you want to pause at this point if there's any questions about sort of City Manager Department goals, objectives?
I'd like to give the council members between each presentation to ask questions so we don't forget some of the important ones. So we'll take it over here and start on this side.
Perfect. So is there progress? We had some city councils, I still listed on there, are we going to be talking about that one too? It was listed before. There's some city council roles, I think, that we had, we were going to talk about. It was also.
You know, we don't have a slide on that, but we're, that's certainly, two mics going. That's certainly something we could do right now, if you have any specific questions about it.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was just going through the thing, so. Yeah, and we're going to go by departments?
Yeah, well, we, I think the mayor was thinking that we were going to be presenting by department. So this is City Manager's Department. I think up next is, is finance and then we'll be going to the Police Department and then hearing from Public Works, planning and then recreation. So that's kind of the way we have it organized this evening. If you'd like, we can, it's council as well, how you'd like to proceed.
I think it'd be more appropriate if we did questions for each department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just had questions on the City Council and City Attorney and then I went to City Manager. So we'll just come back to those at the end. Is that the best thing? So on the, on the City Manager, a couple of questions was, you know, looking at listing out the projects as, you know, looking at Marlowe Geyer. What about, you know, as like our big project or potential for some redevelopment or some projects, you know, to enhance our city and have economic growth and stuff? What about engaging like with the Swenson Lot, Red Tree, some other, you know, properties that are in our community that we talk about a lot, but they aren't, seem like as much of a focus. I know the mall's a large mass, but you know, we also, you know, when you look at the village, that parking lot's been sitting there. I know that's, I think it was probably 2018, a project came forward or seventeen, whatever year it was. And then it's kind of just phased out. And so I was wondering if there's some engagement that we could look at these other properties in our community also to help with long-term.
Simple answer to that is yes. You know, this was a pretty high-level sort of summary of kind of the biggest goals. Frankly, I think we met with Red Tree property owners a week ago to talk to them about, you know, potential opportunities. We, we do check-ins with Swenson probably once every six months. Katie is online. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But yes, we can continue to do that. We can definitely ping them because those are kind of the three big, I think, economic development opportunities that are readily, readily apparent.
Okay, great, thank you. Just a question. On the grant program that you talked about, the community grant, why is there a three, a three-year rotation and question me like, is there a reason that it's on three? And would it be on, is it, if it could be changed? Like if it's on four and it's in cycle with council, I didn't know what the back story was with that.
You know, the backstory is, is that it's one more than two. So originally, really, that's what that's the backstory is, is that originally the city did it every year. So it was an annual process and I want to say about 10 years ago, we went through the process, reviewed it and decided that that was maybe, maybe more, putting the nonprofits through a lot more work, city staff, putting everybody kind of through more rigmarole than was necessary. So we went through a two-year cycle. And then I think in our most recent update, that was when we increased to the three-year cycle because it did feel like it provided more stability for the nonprofits as well as maybe kind of just focusing the city's attention on it a little bit more. So that's how we ended up with three, was one more than two. It certainly would be within council's discretion to move it to four. The same kind of logic could apply. And certainly the nonprofits appreciate it from the certainty standpoint. I think the downside, I guess, is that it potentially locks you into commitments. But I think it's worth a discussion if the council is interested.
Yeah, I was just looking at it from like an election standpoint, if it did think up right, one council could one time maybe go through the process twice. And then, you know, I mean, it's obviously going to catch up or flip around in time, but just, I was just trying to get the back thing, so. You talked about, oh, and then our website, that was, yeah, that was one of the things you highlighted, which is great. I think that is definitely in need of some increase. I think you and I have had some inter, some talks and some interaction about, you know, when having a website has some interaction, but then like a request for service on a certain, let's say a pothole in the community, that at the same time that that would respond back to a community member that the work order was received or closed out in some, some way, I'm looking at trying to just increase our communication back to our community about these things. And I think with a new website or enhance the website that those things can be picked up on. And then just when we talked about, it might be something for the whole council to talk about. When we talked about economic support, you know, how are we going to measure that? You know, it's like daunting, I mean, this year is like, oh, the budget looks like we're in line. And then when we look farther out, three years, you know, our council is going to be making some tough decisions if some things don't change. We're going to have to have more revenue or we're going to be out of position of having an unbalanced budget. And so just looking at those, how are we going to, like every year, evaluate ourselves as a council, as a city, that we have a, set a goal for our, our economic development and we measured it and how we're going to say what our goal is and how we're going to attain it. And I was wondering what your thoughts around how we could, as a council, look at that.
It's an interesting question. I mean, I think one of the challenges around economic development, at the end of the day, really all that matters is the scorecard, right? You know, it's like you could talk about how many different outreach meetings you did and how many different times we touched him with Marlowe Geyer. But at the end of the day, if the project doesn't happen, the project doesn't happen. So, you know, I don't, I could research that and come back. I think it provided a little bit more information about sort of different kinds of metrics on economic development. But my, my gut is if we're growing revenue, that's success.
Right.
Because that's the goal at the end of the day.
Right, yeah, trying to see a way that, you know, you're right, you can have all the meetings and come back in a year and say, we had 50 meetings and we've had every week. We're like, you know, how can we look at really trying to have that as a measurable thing? If the mall is stale and is, you know, the history has been that's where it is, what are we looking at from other things to do that? And then when we get to our planning department, it's one thing I would like to look at is how we can potentially look at, it kind of ties into the economic part, is having an economic development person title. I haven't talked in staffing, but I think way to, when a new business comes to town or something like that, that, you know, we could, a lot of times I think the message is, oh, go talk, go talk to planning, you know? And to have it like, oh, we have a, you know, economic development person or department. It might provide them some maturity. I'm talking for smaller business coming to town that they have that. And then that can fold into that person who directs them to the chamber or to the BIA and something like that. So something to enhance that as a, I guess, verbiage or as a marketing part is something that I think would be something that we should look at. But that's all my comments. I, oh, my last question was just on the annexation. I know you listed it up there. When we get the study back, will they'll be connected to that? Could that be a potential revenue generator or will that, could that be a potential non-revenue generator? And so would that be both connected at that, or what the, like what does it cost to have an extra house in our community? If we look at the area annexation, you know, it's not, there is part of 41st, but you know, it's not like there's a hotel there, you know? So, and then there's a whole bunch of houses and roads and calls for service and stuff. So will that be a part of that study when we get in?
That is actually basically the most key function of the annexation study. And one of the, one of the rules that annexations have to follow is revenue neutrality for the parties. So it's not, back in the day, you could kind of grab land away from the county and make a lot of money for the city. You're not allowed to do that anymore. So the county has to sort of acquiesce and agree. You have to enter these revenue neutrality agreements and they have to look at the numbers and say, we agree that this isn't going to be hurting us. And it's, so in the long term, there's certainly opportunity, I think, for the city, should there be an economically viable annexation opportunity that the City Council supports, the voters support, the people in that area want to support. It may lead to more economic opportunity, maybe better services because the city of Capitola may be able to provide those services more efficiently. There's some opportunities there, but it's not, there's probably not a huge sort of obvious short-term economic win there.
Thank you.
I just, you know, in listening to Councilmember Jensen's comments about metrics and how we determine the progress on economic development. I mean, a simple survey of the vacancies that we have within the city and how quickly we, we help facilitate the filling of those vacancies is probably a metric that we can look into and do. I mean, I think we're just going to go through theories. I, I don't know if I have specific questions.
Thank you. I guess since we're hitting a lot on TOT, is there an update on the Hill Street?
So the Hill Street Hotel is that line, the italic line in there of new revenue? That is the Hill Street.
Okay.
So they are moving ahead. I believe the last update I got, and Katie, you can jump in here if I get this wrong, is that they've received comments back from the engineering building? Building Seminoles. Yes, they've received their first comments back on their building Seminoles. So it is moving ahead. It has been moving ahead very slowly for a very long time. So we are hopeful and I think you will see in Katie's goals that that is included, is issuing building permits for that project in next year's goal, which would mean it would be under construction, hopefully.
Okay, great. And then Jim, I was wondering if you could kind of go back to the CalPERS, just because we touched on it in the fact meeting about how we, the ripple effect of when they make gains, when we see that and why, what kind of, you're anticipating maybe the percentage dropping for us, but even though they made more, you know, like, what was it, like 18 months or something or?
Yeah, so.
Or more.
CalPERS will issue their next actuarial report this August and it will be through data through June of 2024. And it will be for the payment in fiscal year 26, 27. So we're about 18 months behind on when we know it, from when we learn what the payment is, but then we have a little bit of lead time to get it.
Okay, yeah, great. I just wanted to clarify for those listening because that was a new, a new thing for me. And then I think, I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Can I piggyback on your question? So what is, what is determining the increase in the CalPERS costs? Is it because there's more people retiring?
According to CalPERS, the primary driver is their rate of return on investment. So they target 6.8% as their rate of return. So in theory, if they hit 6.8%, all the payments cover all of the obligations. If they get less than 6.8%, then it goes up. Two years ago, they didn't get their actuariales done and they projected out that they were going to hit 6.8% and they lost 6.8%. So that's why we had that huge kind of increase over these last two years, even though according to CalPERS, it's supposed to be this 30-year rolling smoothing average. It doesn't really work out. We did see in, what year was that, 2021, I think, where they exceeded their, they went way over their rate of return. They hit like 21% and our payment stayed flat that year. I think it actually came down like 40 grand or something.
I think at that point, that was supposed to be it. We were supposed to be capped out at 2.1 million at that point and we were like, okay, we've eaten the elephant. We made it through the Great Recession. And then they went and lost whatever that was, 6% a couple of years back. And now the new leveling off point is over three. It's brutal.
I do have a couple more things to say. I do want to highlight, you know, in the report that 83% of our sales tax come from the 41st Avenue corridor. And this area is one of the biggest contributors, but also the most potential for creating additional sales tax revenue for the city. We talked about the mall redevelopment. I just want us to keep that in mind moving forward, that we need to invest in this area in terms of both planning and infrastructure. So I'm glad we're moving forward with the 41st Avenue corridor study and I hope we will continue to focus on the 41st Avenue corridor. Thanks.
Great. I have no questions. We can move on to the next presenter.
All right, thank you, Mayor. That would be me. For the Proposed Administrative Services Department, for accomplishments, we continued our TOT audit program and enforcement. We also implemented, implemented online applications and payments. A big one for this was business license, made business license processing way easier this year. And one of the ways we were able to do that is we changed our banking service provider to West Coast Community Bank, which used to be Santa Cruz County Bank. And they have, they've, actually for a small bank, they had more online payment options than the large bank that we came from. So we're pretty pleased with the service we've been getting from them. Next slide. So for our goals, and I'll talk a little bit more about this for a little bit later on. The accountable government for the proposed new department is absorbing the HR and IT into the re-titled department and to increase efficiency and partnership between finance and HR. Again, I'll get into that a little bit more later. And then collaborating with the Finance Advisory Committee, we had a lot of conversations about coming up with additional revenue ideas. What can the fact do to kind of brainstorm to come up with some revenue ideas to present to council? As far as economic opportunity, we're going to implement a new bail schedule and that new bail schedule includes parking citation fees. So we're doing our research right now what that new fee should be at. I'm developing a long-term financial plan for Measure Y. And then again, identifying future revenue opportunities and addressing increasing costs. And I will turn it over to Chief Ryan now.
Yeah, questions for Administrative Services?
I do have some questions. So in the budget, it looked like there were two different departments. There was the Administrative Services Administrative Services Personnel, and then there's the Administrative Services Finance and IT. So is there, with the reorg, is there going to be one department, or are there still going to be two?
It's, it's one department. It's the, basically what's going to happen is our IT specialist has told us that she's going to be retiring towards the end of the year, so that piece is going to go to more than likely a contract service. So there won't be an additional employee. It'll just be like contract management. And then the HR person, since it's just one individual in HR, and she works primarily with payroll in the finance department. And so the idea is with all of the streamlining that we're doing with online and digitizing forms, that we can coordinate that a lot better if we're within the same department.
Okay.
But I'm leaving, so I am leaving personnel separate because I want to track that UAL. The way that we've accounted for the UAL before has been buried in the departments. So it wasn't Jamie and I sit up here and beat a drum about how evil this expense is, but it's been blended into the departments based on the number of classic employees. And so you'll see some departments, like PD, will shoot way up. They had 1.4 million of this UAL that they have no control over, and it looks like there's this big, huge increase in personnel costs in PD, which is due to the UAL, but council can't really see that because it's all spread out and blended in.
Sorry, can you say, what's UAL?
The CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability for our pensions.
Okay, okay.
And so by moving that into a single line item within a single division, you'll be able to see that cost as it changes in one spot from year to year.
Okay.
That's why I didn't want to blend it with, with finance, because I want that to be able to be something that's very transparent to the council and the public.
Does that have anything to do with there being two HR analysts listed, kind of both under the City Manager Department as well as the Administrative Services Department? Why are there two HR analysts?
I believe the one was last year, in the City Manager, and then this year in Admin Services.
Yeah, there's only one, one position.
Okay.
Can I quickly ask about the contract services? I realize I didn't ask this on Tuesday, but essentially, if we contract the IT out, it'll save us, at least in some of the pension and all that, and without having to hire either a part-time or full-time employee?
It would, we would not have an employee that has benefit costs. It won't impact the UAL.
Right.
However, if we hired somebody new, it would depend on if they'd been in the system in 2012 or earlier or not. Contracting out, my guess is that our costs will be pretty close to the same as what we pay for the current position with fully loaded benefits and everything.
I was just curious.
Because the hope is that it stays basically the same cost.
Okay, thank you.
And for frame of reference, we actually have done that a couple times in the past, where we've gone and contracted it out, and then we've brought it back in-house, and contracted it out. So we're going to give this one a shot.
It's, it's been a strategy of the last two folks that have been in IT to kind of target this. It's kind of what their exit strategy was, would, it would get us to a position where this would make sense.
And I guess I should also note, there's a reason why we brought it back in-house. One of the things that's changed over time since then is, is a lot more of our applications are now cloud-based. You know, if you think back to 10 years ago, it's like, the computer was where it all lived. The computer here was where it all lived versus on the cloud. So we think it's going to be, we think it works this time.
Mr. Member Jensen?
So a couple of questions. One thing, I understand that last year or so, the district, I mean, sorry, the city went through and did a comparability study at all different positions across the thing. And just with this reorg, has the city looked at, I know this is awkward coming talking to you, Jim, but has the city looked at with the increase of responsibilities and reduction that, you know, if we just, I mean, I'm proud of the city that did a comparability study across all departments and everything. This just be, you know, reorg comes in six months later. Have we looked at that to make sure that those duties and things are in line with other neighboring cities? And if not, should we look at that? Or could we look at that just to ensure that, you know, as we did, like a reset, that was not just one position that got moved around and reallocated with the departments?
So actually, before I proposed this idea to Jamie and Chloe, I had went out and looked and seen comparables. The structure itself, setting up HR, IT, and finance within a department is very common for a city of our size. Scotts Valley set up that way. I did my own personal salary study before I talked to Jamie to see what my negotiating power was, and found that with our recent market adjustment, I'm aligned with all the other admin services directors. So there would really be no reason to adjust the salary for this, because if you do a salary study, you're going to find that it's probably right within the same percentage.
Okay, thank you. Just as long as we all feel comfortable, like, a lot of times you take one department, you add two more departments to it, sometimes there'd be an opportunity to look at, you know, what salary. But if that's been done, and everybody's comfortable with that, that's great. So a couple of questions. One thing, when we, I worked on the Measure Y campaign, one thing I was very vocal about during the campaign is that, you know, I really believe in some oversight. And, you know, in Measure Y did not have an oversight part of it connected to it. But something I think is really important for our city as we go through about transparency and trying to reestablish trust across the board on when we have these tax measures, when we look forward that maybe potentially one day we might have to go somewhere out of the city hall. I think it's really important that we have clear tracking. And I think we have an opportunity right now, as a new council with Measure Y coming in, is there a way that we can really do a great job in highlighting Measure Y maybe twice a year? I mean, I think even, even outside of budget cycle, but really to highlight the Measure Y funds came in. I was trying to write them down quick, but like, you know, if it comes in at a million dollars, and we're spending $999,000 on just personnel, then everybody knows that. Or if the salary is only $700,000, what the city, our communities get gaining from a $300,000 delta? Like, we, you know, we're able to do this. And just really highlight those and tell the story around that. And is there an opportunity to really highlight that? And then my second part to that, maybe when we look at the whole budget from, way that easier to look at the budget and the layout of the budget, kind of connect with both those together?
Yes, on both those, the, we've done this before with Measure O, when it first was, I think, the first five years of Measure O. And we've done this with Measure F as well. So we can do the same type of tracking mechanism and showing, you know, what we're budgeting, what we actually received, and then how those funds were spent. We could do that on quarterly, twice a year, whatever the council desired. It wouldn't be that hard. It's, the way sales tax comes in, probably want to do it. I don't know if it'd be worth doing more than twice a year. But we could do that. And then in the conversations that you and I had, and then with the fact meeting the other night, I think one thing that'll help make the budget easier to read, as, when we were talking, is you would ask me about this expense, and I'd say, oh, it has offsetting revenue. And you say, well, how would I know that? And I'm like, well, it's 30 pages before that. So most people can't figure that out. So before the next, hoping before the next fact meeting, that I have a way to list, like, all of the expenditures that have offsetting revenues, and then, like, special events, for example. PD will generate 70, or spend $70,000 of overtime on special events. There's $70,000 of revenue that's paying for that overtime. So things like that. The red light enforcement is another good example. So I'm going to have that by the 29th, for sure, hopefully by the next fact meeting.
And, you know, not from a negative comment, it's just, and I was not involved as much in what Measure F, but there's still some question about how Measure F was spent when different places. So that's why I just think it's time to reset Measure Y, forget what's happened in the past. And we can't open those doors up and try to figure that out. I mean, you can't, I know you can't, but I mean, from a community standpoint, we have to move forward and in a positive manner. And so have Measure Y kick off to show that money. You know, when people say, oh, we know the tax increase, we'd say, well, look exactly where it went to and highlight it. So on that degree. The only other one was regarding the fact, sorry, regarding the fact, hearing, like, some of the concerns, and I, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, being a new city council member, understanding, like, what each department does, the service they provide, the revenue they, and I think it's just educational, you know, like, we're not finance experts and, some people are, in fact, probably are. But, you know, I was wondering if there's a way that, that over the next year, we can help the fact by having department heads come to that and explain, like, I know you could explain the budget, but the services that the city gets for those. So, like, if Jessica came to the meeting, she could talk about, really, what does parks mean? You know, we all think of the park as the park and the guy cuts the grass, but like, all those extra things that go into it. And so we understand the value that we're putting into these different departments and everything. And just a recommendation, I think, is really trying to communicate better the amazing service that we do provide to the community, whenever you just look at dollars sometimes, or, and I'm just getting concerned in three years, when we have budget issues, you know, people, if we understand the great service that we've been getting, and if we have to start to make a cut at some time, then they can, will know about the great service, and they understand what that cut would be, and how hard that's going to be when we have to make that decision. So that's just an idea for fact, and how we can enhance that. And that's all I have on that one. Thank you.
Great. I guess it's Chief Ryan's turn. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Sarah, and I'm a classic employee. I'm sorry. Okay, so we'll start with 24, 25 accomplishments, some of which Chief Dally and I came up with together, and some were his alone. We implemented, we're actually still in the process of implementing electronic citations for our patrol personnel. That was set aside in the budget to make happen this, last year. Examining alternative sites for PD yellow, what that means is not a lot to everybody, but radio channels are an issue. And so once we partnered with the lifeguard program, partnering and establishing radio channels that work for everybody, where we're not tying up a radio channel that our 911 dispatch has to listen to us jibber-jabber back and forth. We also did some research for infrastructure upgrades to include new antennas and develop some short-term plans to support our current radio infrastructure. There are some, there have been some issues, and it, which creates a safety issue for our officers when they can't hear each other, just merely the way the city is set up and the low-lying areas, like in the village. So putting antennas high up the mall, the library, Jade Street, places like that. And then, of course, the topic that we will continue to discuss, focusing on e-bike safety and pedestrian safety. We've sought some grant opportunities and traffic. And as I came to the council previously, doing special operations, setting, having officers that are specifically designated to address e-bike education and enforcement around the New Brighton Middle School area, and speed and driving under the influence. We actually do have an officer, you guys will be introduced to him, for the Officer of the Year Award. A lot of our officers have strived for the MAD award, others against drunk driving, and been, have been successful in actually getting that award several years in a row. Okay, moving on to our goals. Even though this seems big, it's not big enough for me. So continuing with bicycle and pedestrian safety, we're going to continue keeping that education and outreach on our radar and networking with New Brighton Middle School and just the community at large. There's a county-wide radio project going on that we have been working on for maybe a couple of years now to get in contract with a radio company. It's going to be very costly. It involves all of your law enforcement agencies, including fire. And we will have a piece of that, a smaller piece than others because of our mere size, but we will have a cost associated with that. So we're factoring that in to this year's, this, this next budget. So we're prepared for it when it actually takes place. And this infrastructure will be very, very helpful just countywide with our radios. We, we work a lot together, and as it stands right now, if, if we need to go help Watsonville, we, we're not heard on the radio. If we go too far into the county, we're not heard on the radio. So these kind of infrastructure improvements will be very, very helpful as a small county that we are, working together. And then moving on to economic opportunity, our, as if you guys have dove into the Finance Director's packet, you'll see that our parking revenue is down. So shifting some of our parking, the accessibility to an app-based and web-based platform to also assist with the accessibility component to it. We spend about $2,100 monthly towards CalA, which helps to support the pay stations that are frequently, they, they go down. They're, they're challenged by the weather, they're, they're challenged by just the, the climate that they exist in, so they, they go down quite frequently. So we're hoping that through an app-based program and, and web-based program, that we can improve the accessibility to it. And I have monthly meetings with the BIA Board, which have been really beneficial just to learn more about from the business side. And they've actually been very receptive to the app and the, the application and the web-based. I've had a lot of positive feedback. I wasn't sure how that was going to go. And it's gone very well, so I'm happy to hear about that. So to continue on with our goals, we, although I love to celebrate my promotion and others, what happens behind us is there becomes vacancies. So filling those vacancies has created a challenge. And we've been working to get our parking team fully staffed and deployed out into the field to, to do what they, what they need to do. And we actually just released our third parking officer, who I introduced to you guys, Austin, to be solo this week. So that's exciting. It will go into the summer with a fully staffed, three parking officers. We are down one community service officer, so we're looking at that vacancy as well. And our other one has been out on sick leave. So we currently do not have a community service officer in the field, which does create times where our parking enforcement is pulled to do some tasks for police officers because of our staffing. And whether it be, you know, put up a barricade or something usually traffic-related, and of course, non-suspect-related, but they are a part of that overall operational team. And we are carrying two, technically two vacancies right now in the police officer position. We have one, total of four, that are not in the field working right now, because we have one in the academy and then one that's on training. So that, it creates, they're not actually owning a shift out in the field. So, and then we are looking to fill two spots and doing some internal recruitment that's going up on our website on Monday for that. And then in terms of technology, we're really hoping to, we've had to make some huge leaps and bounds with technology catching up with this idea of, I mean, everything's recorded. We ran into some challenges, not really thinking in 2015 when we took on body cameras, what it was to store data and evidence digitally. So we got in contract with Axon a couple of years ago, starting with our body cameras, in-car cameras. And now we're finding that our interview system in our interview room inside the police department, it doesn't function. And so what we end up doing is taking our body camera off and setting it on the table and hoping that we can catch an interview that way. So we're hoping to move forward with an Axon contract for that, because it's, this is the company that we've been using for everything else. However, in the last 24 hours, I learned that the contract that we thought we were engaging in has some other components to it that would involve a third-party IT, some other expenses. So we're stepping back to really look at that, but I'd really like to find a way to work that into our budget for this coming year, so that we're fully functional from a investigative standpoint, doing evidence-based interviews. And that's it. Any questions?
Perfect. Thank you. And, and thank you again, Captain Ryan, for your time yesterday, when I know we met for some time and answered.
I know we met for some time and answered some of my questions. So thank you for that. So a quick couple of mine, questions were around like overtime. You know, we looked at that number in the budget, I think it was $290,000. And then, you know, I hear Jim talked about how he's going to break out that number, because that number like is very starch. I mean, you're like, oh my gosh. And then when I was talking to you, I said, you know, what about Arden Wine? And we're like, oh, there's, that's $10,000 in the company. So now really our overtime budget is 280. And then, you know, you were talking about other things that ABC grants and all this stuff. And so that number really kind of out of skew. I mean, it is 290, but maybe that number is $80,000. And if you have opening positions and you're running 12-hour shifts, you know, there's really a delta cost because we haven't been lucky enough to find two other police officers. So I think it's going to be important as we try to tell the story, because what happens in our community, I think sometimes if people just randomly grab a budget, like, oh my gosh, please, it costs us so much money to spend $290,000 overtime. And, you know, it's ridiculous. And it's really, it is 290, but there's other sorts. So I think that's going to be important, you know, to help tell the story about every department, but especially I think yours, because I think yours is probably the highest overtime thing. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. And maybe would that come back after, would we see that, Jim, this year? Like, would you be able to like break a number down like that so we can really get over that number?
Yeah, I plan to have that for the next budget hearing on the 29th.
Perfect. Great.
I hope to have it ready by the FAC meeting next week.
Okay. And then was it just, I was confused a little bit on goals on, it said about like two officers. Was there just a discrepancy like in two officers that, because you have vacancies, not that, it's not proposed personnel, right?
It's not proposed right now. We have-
Oh, you want two more?
I want two more. I mean, if we're going to talk about that, but I do want two more. Our officers are right now on mandatory 12-hour shifts, which, yeah, which means you have four on each-
Right now, if the two officers that came through that are in training right now, then you're down, you're really down four today in the field. You have two that are going through, well-
Training.
Academy or whatever, training. And they come in, you'd still be down two. And so you're actively hiring. And what's approximate time, like if you hired just a person a day that was green and just going to go to the academy, how long until they would be out on our streets?
So if we hire somebody that does not have academy, it's about a year before we actually get to see them. The background process takes a couple of months. We've already mapped it out, the next academy, if we get into it, because there's a high demand, we're, we're competing with all of our partner allied agencies. So the next academy starts in September. That's a six-month academy. And then they come out and they're in a field training program for another four months.
So your shortfall during that period would be paying some overtime?
Absolutely. Yes. Yes.
Great. Great. Next thing, I saw there's another little discrepancy back and forth, but you're asking for one new police car this year, is that correct? And then I've gone out on a ride along and run around in some of those beautiful explorers that are well broken in. Do you know about approximate mileage when we're looking at replacing a vehicle? What does that kind of look like?
So we look at, to keep up with the cycle, that's reasonable, because otherwise we're going to be asking for several cars each year. Right now, there are several cars on our fleet that have approximately 90,000 miles on them, which is really high for these cars, the way that they drive, you know, starting and stopping. I'm by no means trying to say I'm mechanically inclined. However, I've, you know, these cars don't last that long when they're that high a miles. So-
I was just looking at like an amortization, because is that on pace to keep up with the demand? Like, I don't know, do we have 10 cars? And so does the car last 10 years? Or is that pace correct?
Yes, we're keeping up, we're, I don't think I understand your question.
I mean, if a car, a police car only lasts five years and we're only getting one a year and we have 10, right, then we're going to be in trouble. So I was just wondering-
We need to keep on pace with replacing, I mean, if, if, if the budget would allow, I would be asking for two cars a year. We got two last year. So I know that other departments need vehicles as well. So we can, we can get by with the one, getting one this year and then look forward to next year and just keep us on track. I wouldn't want to skip a year. I think that would put us behind.
I think my point was just hoping that we were looking forward at it, you know, that we don't have a year that all of a sudden we have to buy three cars or, you know, four cars, because if we only buy one a year. So I don't know, maybe you guys have internally done that. I was just, I have a question on that. And then, and you, I guess you evaluate the motorcycles at the same time?
Correct. Yes.
I know we're buying used before, right?
We, we have in the past, but yeah.
And then the interview room upgrade, what is, do we, it sounds like there's not a budget item for that this year? Or is there, or is that just an ask and is there money like incorporated into this budget for that?
There, there is, there is an, are you looking at them?
Wait, wait.
And they're looking at me. So there is an ask. We do have the, the SLF funds, the reserve funds. However, the way that technology has worked and gone on and on and on, and I've watched this profession change and have those requirements. So I would be cautious to not include that, the technology upgrades that are required for us to keep up, not incorporate that into an overall budget.
Yeah, I'm sorry for all the question. I just, my first year going through, I just tried to understand the whole entire thing. And then, oh, one thing, I know when, on your goals, would one of the goals, like when we heard the ABC lady came and she was talking about the tobacco enforcement, if we did the ban and stuff like that, and we heard like Scott's Valley and a quarter million or under whatever the number was, is that one of your goals to be looking at additional grants like that to help offset those two?
That is actually one of our goals, is to put in for that grant. It's, it's just opening now. And so to see if that's maybe an opportunity. We have the ongoing ABC grant as well as a vest, a bulletproof vest program that we participate in where they pay half of what our vests cost, because our vests generally run around $2,000 apiece.
And then on the grants, like looking at, like your department being understaffed by four people potentially, who writes the grants? And do you, like, it seems like a lot for us as councils say, oh, go get this grant. And I don't know what takes the writing grant for a quarter million dollars, or maybe it's, you know, a checkbox thing or something. But, you know, how does that work internally? And is there grant money to have grant writers? I don't know.
To my knowledge, there isn't money to have grant writers. However, I'm experienced in writing grants. I've written several. And we also have, our analyst is experienced with writing grants. We, we have several people on staff that are usually, it's, it's at the sergeant and above rank that are typically more than happy to take a shot at a grant, give it a try.
Great. And so how many, you know how many grants we got last year?
We've got two grants.
Awesome. Great job. One of my things I've talked about many times, and I know you're going to be giving a presentation, I think, next meeting about the emergency disaster preparedness plan. Will that be a goal also to have that implemented over the next year?
It will be. Yeah. It's speaking of grants, I'm just, I'm also waiting, hope, very hopeful. It's just that OR3 will come forward with a grant. It is, it turns out that all of our agencies within the county could use, our, our emergency operations plan need to be updated.
And so do you think we could just, I think that's a great one for, can we just highlight that maybe on the next draft that comes back that, and I don't know, so whatever you're going to call OR3 grant or emergency disaster-
Emergency operational plan. Yeah. I'd love to have it finished and published on the website. This, this issue has been sort of kicked down the road. And we've been faced, as you guys, as you all know, last several years with natural disasters. So I'd like to have it published on the website.
And I have just a couple more. So another one is just looking at like community outreach and sort of like that. Is there a plan to ever look at revitalizing or reusing or being more apparent up at the mall? You know, I've, I've been talking to the mall up there and believe it or not, I think they're down to, I think Melinda gave a report last week, you know, that I think they're down to maybe only seven vacancies. So I think there's more and more people up there and stuff like that. And we do have a nice center up there. I know the mall works great with the city. And I think we just pay the utility cost. But would there be any chance that that might be utilized a little bit more, like with parking or, you know, a sergeant comes to me, write reports there, something like that, and have that more open? So we have more of a presence, maybe more of a turn, but also that the community sees us more on the community than at the central hub?
Yes, we, we can revitalize that space on a normal shift basis. I, I'd be apprehensive to do it as an overtime. There was a time where the mall, we had overtime shifts at the mall. And so, but in terms of having it be a center where officers gather and make themselves available, we might be able to set up some computers. I'd have to check with IT if we can set up computers for any kind of report writing.
It's gone through a couple. It was being used and then it was going to be a, I think, teen center. And then, I mean, it says Capitol Police all across the top and everything. So, or community, I don't know what the-
I think the museum's been using it as a, as a place as well, but we, we can't have more of a presence up there.
And then my last one is probably just a big one, but to talk about the parking. So, you know, you look at the budget, I think the budget last year, rough numbers, $500,000. We hit 350. And so $150,000 in shortfall. I guess we could look at staffing not being there or training and stuff like that. And then with the goals this year to be up another hundred. So there's a quarter million dollar swing, you know, $250,000 out of $600,000 outside of, you know, with the same staff. And yes, maybe they're trained now and everything. It just seems like that's a big hole. And I was just wondering, do, do you think really that have the new QR codes and having three full-time staff, that that's something that we're going to be able to attain? And then connected with that, what other things are we doing about parking that might be affecting it? So I know, for example, I understand that the junior guards have a parking program that they give out parking passes, you know, that, for the parents when they're picking up their kids and stuff. And my question around that, which I think is great because it helps keep out of the community, but is that parking pass, if that's good for a two-week session, is that good for the weekend? And then they have a parking pass and then they park in the village. And then that lowers our parking revenue down. And, you know, or they have a parking pass, so then they, there will never be a ticket, you know, because they're over there over three hours. So it's eating up space and stuff. So I'm just kind of looking at parking from an overall standpoint. I think we have some staffing issues that were short. We're giving out parking passes, you know, overall, and I was just wondering what your thoughts were. And maybe Jamie, you could share some of those too about the overall parking. You know, I think we have employees that get parking passes, you know, council gets them, our planning department gets them. And I, if we use them, I think the revenue Jim projects out on a parking pass is $4,010, $4,010 a year. And if they're getting filled up by us giving out a whole bunch of these parking passes, that affects our budget. And then you have the challenge of staffing and having to figure out how you're going to generate a quarter million dollars more this year in parking.
Right. And I don't know if our city manager wants to chime in here, but a couple of other things as well as outside of staffing, some other challenges are, I love our community events. We have 26 of them that are pretty big and significant. There does, and there are village closures that are involved in that. The concept, which has been a challenging one to navigate with the community, us charging for that, those losses, is a newer concept for us. So I am hoping to see a reflection of that when we move forward into this next budget cycle, just outside of staffing in general.
But the shortfall is on park, is on, not parking revenue, is on tickets, right?
Yeah.
And, and so like, I guess an event might now, if the event takes up the whole village, there won't be any parking tickets, you know, for that time. So then that's-
Sure, sure.
... revenue?
So to answer one of your questions directly, the junior guard parents' parking pass isn't good on weekends. It's only good when times when the junior guard program is active.
Perfect.
And I think, you know, when you, we look at kind of the, the shortfalls we're having in parking sites and then some of the changes that we've proposed, you know, the chief and I have been actively looking at this with the finance director, kind of trying to diagnose what the issues are. I know the chief is hyper-focused on it at this point. In addition, finance director mentioned that we're going to be taking a look at the bail schedule. I feel like my microphone is working really well now. And we're going to be taking a look at the bail schedule because I think, I think our parking ticket rate frankly has just gotten a bit behind. And so I think that there's potentially room there as well. So we think that the number is attainable and we are very focused on it.
And those are all my questions. Again, Mike, thank you for everything you do. Thank you for your time. My question is just based around just trying to get a better understanding and understanding better when I look at the budget that we're supposed to be voting on. So thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you. I appreciate the questions.
I think Councilmember Jensen asked all my questions. Thank you.
Not so much question, but just to reiterate, we did touch on the parking citations in the FAC meeting on Tuesday. And so I hope it's something we can revisit. I know you didn't really have any projection under like us changing rates. I know we just did a rate hike, but that was just for the hourly rate. It wasn't necessarily for ticket rate, right?
Correct. We've, we adjusted the parking rates, the hourly parking rates in January of 2024.
Yeah.
Last summer, we adjusted our fee schedule. And then this is, the bail schedule is going to be the last piece of that, those kind of three-
Bail meaning amount?
It's all of the different costs of different fines and all the different citations that they write. And parking citations fall within that.
Okay. And then I guess my other question, I know Chief Dally did a lot of work with the coffee and surf permits. And I, and I had a lot of questions when he, when we were going over that. So is that going to come back to us, like the cost for those permits? And who are, who are receiving those permits? I, I remember it being like a screaming deal. So I just wanted to check in on the cost for those. And, you know, we were, had a discussion about city residents versus neighbor, neighboring residents, county residents who were kind of getting into the lottery and then how much we were charging, which I thought was, not that it shouldn't be affordable, but that it's maybe somewhere that we can pull a few extra dollars from.
We could, we can certainly bring that back.
Cool. Thank you. That'd be great.
Piggyback on that, do you think that we could share the data, just who, who has parking passes in the city and that we look at that across the whole entire city? I mean, like, you know, like these different, are there other groups that have them? And just, could we get a report on that?
Yeah, we can prepare a report to show, I mean, the parking situation is, is very complicated, to say the least. You know, there's different kinds of passes that different people have. Businesses have passes that are valid down in this, in the village. Employees can get passes in the upper lot, the junior guards get passes during their session. We, I think we could put together a written report. It'd probably be a little bit dry for a, for hearing.
Can you just share it in an email or something like that? That'd be great.
Quick question. The Axon body cameras and even our, our evidence collection stuff, as I know the police department has talked with the sheriff's office in the past about sharing, like the iClouds for all the video that's saved. And there might be a big savings cost. Have you looked into that lately?
Not lately, no. In terms of the, what I've learned as a non-real tech person, but speaking with Axon and, and their, their team, as regards to the interview room, it needs its own servers and its own support that I don't believe that we could house at headquarters. My understanding is we need to have it on-site. And the rest of it really hasn't been, the body cameras and the in-car cameras haven't been an issue. When the moment we pull into the parking lot here, it's, begins uploading.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on that. Because you said what we have in the interview room right now just doesn't-
We don't.
So we just don't even have it?
We do not. What we do is we activate our body cameras and set them up. And when you're doing sensitive interviews, it's, it's nice to have different angles and not have that sitting there.
Really? Yeah. Okay. Great. I think that is a priority. Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go. We're on now. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Going to do a quick update on the accomplishments of the Public Works Department over fiscal year 24, '25. So a big chunk of our work is advancing capital projects, the community center renovation, as you all know. And we had our groundbreaking for last month, is currently underway. A Treasure Cove Playground, we're hoping to kick off later this calendar year and wrapping up the end of the park at Riston Mansion. And we've done a lot of improvements of public spaces. The upper lot parking, upper lot sidewalk has been completed. We did a refresh of the pump track. We have our wharf signage getting installed next month. And then also the wharf temporary facility is one item that did not make it onto- And then also the wharf temporary facility is one item that did not make it onto the slide there is that we've updated a lot of our contracts. We had a lot of longstanding contracts that we rebid. So, we have new janitorial services and sidewalk cleaning services and the shell service that you all approved at last meeting. And then, of course, we kept delivering our core services, which includes supporting everyone here, all of our facilities and our year-round public events. Next slide, please. So, for fiscal year '25, '26, under our strategic plan accountable government, we're proposing to add two new full-time field staff to support park operations, which I have a separate slide on following this slide. For community safety, we are planning on completing the 41st Avenue multimodal improvements that we presented on a couple of meetings ago and designing and advancing our Bay Avenue corridor project, including pursuing funds to construct the project. Under sustainable infrastructure, we have completing this design of the cliff drive resiliency project. So, we can request funds from Caltrans. So, when FHWA releases them, we are able to start that project right away. And then updating the city's climate action plan, which involves a sea level rise study as well. Under healthy families, et cetera, we have completing our community center renovation. That's completely underway and the playground project, hopefully by the end of this coming fiscal year. Next slide, please. So, a little bit more information on the additional staff. We looked into staff from 25 years ago at our courtyard and we had 13 full-time staff, which includes one mechanic and then the rest are field staff. Currently, we have 12. So, we have gone down in the past 25 years and do use temp workers over the summer to give us some of those core services. In that time, the city has had developed two new parks, McGregor and then Rispin coming online here very soon. We've almost doubled the amount of vehicles we have. So, that includes the vehicles here, the police vehicles, our heavy equipment vehicles, including the sweeper and the loader. And then increased public events quite a bit in the past 20 years, from 10 to 40. And then for those major events, like those wharf to wharf art and wine went from four to 12 over the past 20 years. So, with all of the extra work for everyone. And then our upcoming retirements, we have four long-term employees that we're so happy to have. They have so much experience. We have a lot of specialized work we do, being a coastal community. We were really hoping to do some of that cross-training with some younger or newer staff before those folks eventually retire. And so, that is my summary of what I have going on and I have, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Joe. You could have went to Marla. So, first of all, Jessica, thank you for the amazing work that you do on the grants and stuff. I mean, it's incredible when you see that amount of money that I know your department provides more opportunity to get them, but the numbers are staggering on what you bring in. So, thank you for all that. So, outlook for next year, I know, I think our next meeting, you're going to be bringing in more of the project-based things, the granular part of it, right? Like what you're projecting out and stuff like that. I was just hoping that in that would be some more, you know, I think Councilmember Morgan was instrumental in getting some of these sidewalk crossing, flashing lights and stuff like that. And hopefully there's, we could, there's some money allocated for some more of those and some strategic areas. And I'm just advocating for a couple. I'm sorry. The other one that I know has been brought to my attention many times is the famous or unfamous sidewalk outside the backside of the mall that goes out like, let's say, the food court and then connects to the neighborhood there. It's really, I don't know if you know what they're, you probably know the area exactly what I'm talking about. It's just, it has curb cuts for a sidewalk. There's no, there's no crosswalk. I had heard it was taken out from a safety standpoint, but then I've heard it's a, it's a safety standpoint. Everybody uses it because it's all, everything. So, hopefully we can look at that or maybe there is some sort of enhancement. I went out and really looked at it a lot for a couple of hours and just how fast those cars come around. Trader Joe's like heading down towards Capitol Avenue. It's just an, an issue and stuff. So, getting on to the parks and streets on the two staffing thing, which I think is amazing if our, if we approve two people. What do you think like the communities are going to, how, you know, what the, how's the community going to measure these two people? Like specifically, I know you're bringing on the Rispin Park, right? And so, you know, there's not literally lawn in that area and there's some planting that I know has been cut back and everything. But I was just wondering, like, again, telling our community how lucky we are that now we got these extra funds that don't really affect, they're not our exact, well, they're our tax dollars. But I mean, they're coming out of Measure Q, right? Q, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. And so, you, how, how are we going to like be able to tell that story? Or what improvements are we going to be able to see, do you think, with adding two more people like that?
I will say as these projects come online, both the Rispin and then also the Community Synergy H Street projects, those involve a lot of new as-designed landscape maintenance. And it's going to be lovely. It's going to be beautiful. Landscape architects have very lofty ideas. And so, we'll be really seeing that refresh in these park spaces and then being able to maintain that new standard that these like refreshed and renovated facilities have brought up. I would say would probably be a direct impact that people would notice.
Yeah, I was 100% for it. I was just wondering, they showed like, I know when we put in new landscaping, like now it might just be dirt and lawn. And now we're going to have plants and bushes and then lawn. And then those things are going to have to be trimmed and stuff like that. So, we'll be seeing that. Great. And then under facilities, I think it falls a little bit underneath the PD. But also we've been doing improvements or the city has been doing improvements in the police department, correct? At the same time, trying to clear that up. My question just around that is, I know in the future, we're going to be looking at spending, we're going to be getting a, a report back on what the overall city hall condition is. I think it's where they call it a phase two review or whatever. Long-term, just being, making sure that all conditions in our city hall working environment are being looked at and everything. So, I don't know if there's a long-term plan. You know, I don't think we're knocking over city hall anytime soon, you know. So, you know, with, we're allocating money for PDs improvements, is there going to be some money allocation that we could go through? Maybe each department at least just paint the walls that probably haven't been painted in 30 years? Is there something that that's going to be looked at from a deferred maintenance standpoint picked up?
Public Works does maintain a maintenance budget and for sure, things like that are within, are within scope. You know, if we do need to have painting, things like that. There's a larger fundamental question about this facility. This facility is relatively long, long in the tooth. We did phase one of our city hall assessment, which was a con building condition assessment. And phase two has kind of been in the ether for a while. I don't know if now is really the time when the city has the budget or the bandwidth to tackle it. But the phase two of the study was really to look at like, what would it take to renovate this building? And what would be the other options? That's kind of the fundamental decision and it's one that we face all the time here when we're looking at HVAC system isn't great. Well, do we use duct tape to patch up the ducts? Or is it a new HVAC system? You know, and those kinds of decisions are different if you're talking about a building that's your forever home or a building that's like, you know, you're making work for the next five years. So, you raise a good point. It's a tough question. I don't know whether or not now strategically is when we really want to sort of dive into that project. But it's, I think, definitely one to keep on your radar and think about when, you know, when we sort of feel like we're ready to dive into a big, hard project.
Yeah, I guess I was, you're right. And when I was just concerned, like I understand PD and I was in there, the environment was, you know, it's sewage issues and everything. And I don't think we have that exact same condition, if you say upstairs. But the, the time I heard from the city clerk on some improvement stuff, I, I think, you know, as we tackle that and understand, it's okay to tackle the city hall talking about, say, this is a project without five years. And so, then we would look at what our deferred maintenance plan looks like for five years and to make an environment that if it's just paint, you know, if there's torn carpet or something like that, to take care of the working conditions for our employees. So, it's of a certain standard, but it's not a whole bunch of investment. And so, I was just making sure that we weren't just going through and making PD at a certain level and then just equity across the whole city. And so, I think you're right on a long-term question, you know, when is that? But if it's 10 years out, if it's five years out, or if it's 20 years out, I think we'd probably make some different decisions and just making sure that. So, that was that. And then last thing, I don't know, I had a note under fleet, which I think falls on me. We brought on, we have two sweepers now, correct? And we only had one. And are we, how is the new electric sweeper working from a maintenance standpoint? Is that consuming time or is it work? I, I don't see it as much as the other one. I see like the older ones running, I think a little more because it's a little bit louder.
Yes. So, it's been challenging. I will say that was the very first of that kind off of the, off of the line. So, there's been a lot of pickups. We've had really good support from the manufacturer. That's actually currently where the sweeper is right now, which is why you've been seeing our regular sweeper around. We are obligated to dispose of that sweeper in the next five years because of the grant we got for the electric sweeper. So, we are continually, continuing to work through some of those kinks with the electric sweeper.
If I saw right on the reallocation of staff, it looks like you're going to go to two full-time mechanics, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's all numbers, but I mean, is some of that because the increased vehicles from wherever went to 30 vehicles? And then you're really maintaining two sweepers at the same time? And is that where you're seeing? Because then also I think the highlight too, what the, you know, your, your department is doing up there. And again, I think it's showing our community how we are counting for it. But like, didn't they outfit the two new police cars that we got? So, there's some cost savings to the city. I think that's what was projected out that they, we did the in-house redo of the police cars just offset to save money for the city. And so, sometimes we look at staff or you look at overtime, but they're doing things that are saving the city money. But it's just hard to tell that great story that we're doing as, you know, in our staffing.
No, definitely our lead mechanic has taken on a lot of leadership roles, doing more things for the police, which is, I think, going to benefit to both us and the police department. The other mechanic that we have on who's currently half-time mechanic going to full-time mechanic really is to reflect the work that he's doing currently and has been for the past few years.
Well, please share, I don't know the McCoo, the exact mechanic, but it's great that he has taken on that challenge of like outfitting a police car. He probably never done it before, you know what I mean? But again, we appreciate and thank you to your whole staff.
Thanks for all that you do, Jessica. I have no questions. I guess my question is, it, it might be too long-winded, but just possibly to touch upon. So, so we're bringing on two new Public Works employees. And how, not to get deep in the weeds, but how are you like structurally, are these new employees going to be specific for Rispin and Jade Street? Or are those jobs really pretty well shared by the team of Public Works?
I will say generally everyone has the skill set to do everything. And obviously in emergency, it's all hands on deck. Specifically, the funding that we're using for Measure Q is for parks. And so, those staff will be assigned to parks.
Okay, yeah, I guess that's kind of where I was going, especially if we're trying to sort of streamline where the funding is coming from and what exactly it's paying for. So, that's good to know. And I'm excited. I think if we do have these extra personnel, while they're not PD, they are presence of the city. And I think that that's really important, especially we've had struggles with Rispin being vandalized and just, you know, young kids doing what they do. So, it's great to see them out and I hope, I hope the two new employees can, can feel that and we'll be grateful to have them. So, thanks for everything.
Yeah, I'm really grateful for Measure Q. It's going to, it's going to help out immensely. And it's probably going to be a little more light on Rispin Mansion after our show was aired last night. So, it'll be interesting. But thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to do a sound check and make sure you can hear me okay. This is Katie Hurley, the Community Development Director.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Perfect. I apologize for not being there tonight, but I'm a little under the weather. So, accomplishments in 2024, 2025, as you all know, we got our sixth cycle housing element certified and we immediately jumped into implementation with updates to the zoning code. And also exciting news was the, when we issued the permit for the 36 100% affordable units at the Bluffs at 4401 Capitola Road. We obtained a half a million dollars in CDBG grant money for food and transit service for low-income families. We also granted, we received a grant for 3.3 million CDBG funds for the renovation of the Jade Street Community Center. We gave back to the community with a loan of 1.6 million to Mid Penn Housing for their 52-unit 100% affordable project at 1098 38th Avenue. That was a mix of different housing funds, the PLHA funds, which is part of a real estate transaction fee, as well as redevelopment funds from a loan that was paid off. We've initiated the Capitola Wharf Master Plan and the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan. I'm quickly going to put in a plug for next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM at the New Brighton Middle School for the Community Open House for the Capitola Wharf Master Plan. Getting the word out and the fact that the survey is online. But also the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan, really looking at economic development and placemaking and attracting business to the 41st Avenue Corridor while keeping the circulation in good form. We, just about a month ago, came forward with our new rehabilitation program with Habitat for Humanity to help low-income households put more money into their homes for deed-restricted housing in Capitola. And then in combination with that, our, our team is always working on processing planning permits and building permits. We had 100 planning permits this year and 331 building permits. So, next slide, please. So, now we'll jump into our goals for the next year. Attainable housing is at the top of our list. We've got our, we started our housing rehab program with Habitat. And we're also going to be working on a project with the Dakota Apartments. Those apartments are nearing 30 years in, in their life and they need a new heating system, a new roof. So, we're working closely with them on applying for a home, applying for a home grant utilizing home program income funds that we have available. We are also actively working with our, updating our multi-family zoning for, to remove barriers for housing. We met with HCD today. And also, as Jamie mentioned, we've been talking with the mall and making some progress there and looking ahead for mall rezoning for the, increasing the height and floor area while making sure we think about our community and how it, the mall interacts with the community over time. So, looking at rezoning there. In the coming year, we're also going to issue the occupancy for the 36-unit, the, for the Bluffs at 4401 Capitola Road. And that should happen this summer or early fall. So, we'll be excited for that ribbon cutting. And then issue a building permit for the 52-unit 100% affordable project at 1098 38th Avenue. Right now, they're, they've got about half their funding, so they're applying for more grant money. So, we're hoping they'll be successful in that in the coming year. In terms of economic opportunities, the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan, our senior planner, Brian Freilich, is working on that. And just, we had our kickoff recently and they're really just, they're looking at options for what possibilities could be on the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan in preparation of going out to public, to the public and getting feedback. And also, we plan to hopefully issue the Hill Street Hotel permit for the building permit that we're in the second round of comments, as Jamie mentioned earlier, and just waiting for a resubmittle there. And for healthy families, community and environment, we've got the Capitola Wharf Master Plan underway. And I'll, once we have a, a chosen path for that, I'll be looking into funding opportunities for implementation. And then also more CDBG grants for food, transportation. And we're hoping to hear, we have an application in for the Treasure Cove Playground and we should get some finality with that this summer. So, hopefully in, in the next month or so, we should hear on that. So, that is my update from community development and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll open it up over here.
So, you touched a little bit on the mall zoning. So, I'm just kind of pulling for a little more information, maybe on what the back and forth has been with Merlon Guyer. And is, it sounds like there's more traction. It sounds like things are more promising. I don't know what, what more you could elaborate on those conversations.
Sure. Jamie, do you want to take this one? Or would you like me to?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we've been in preparation for the zoning updates. During the housing element update, we committed to increasing the height to seventy-five feet. We also committed to not including the parking garages and the floor area ratio. So they get they'll get more area within their buildings. And in putting together that, we really, we want this to be a partnership with Merlot Geyer and really understand what their vision is for the mall. Oftentimes, if when we put regulations in place, it, although they're intended, you've got good intentions, sometimes it doesn't assist in the redevelopment. So we're really, we've been meeting with them, just trying to meet almost on a monthly basis, and really want to work with them to understand more of what their goal is on the mall site and like what the future development, what they're looking at to make sure that when we're building these codes and the height limits and like the open space requirements, all of that, that we're working together to get a project that's a win-win for both the city and Merlot Geyer. So we've been communicating that message to them that we really want this to be a partnership. And so we're hoping through these discussions eventually to sit down with their design team and really work through just like great design on that site. So for as of now, it's been conversations, but we're, I think we're both dedicated towards moving this path forward, towards creating a code that supports redevelopment of the mall.
That's great. Thank you. And then just a follow-up. Has there been any discussion on sort of like an interim use for whether it's the parking lot? I know there have been events, you know, in this year's, the they did the skate event, and then there's been use of the parking lot here and there. But I just didn't know if anybody has come forward in wondering if spaces are available for sort of a interim use, whether it's the parking lot or the larger spaces of the mall, and if Merlot Geyer is open to that type of use in the interim.
Yeah, I think the mall, Brian Kirk is the general manager there, and he's been doing an amazing job of filling utilizing the Sears space, as well as having some events in the parking lots. They tried to do a farmer's market. We did a permit for that. The code is really open to having farmer's market there, but it was not successful for them. So they ended up not continuing with that. But I think the malls, you know, they've been doing really great with filling their vacancies, as Councilmember Jensen mentioned. So they have oversight of that mostly. We really made the code more business friendly over the past five years. And farmers markets, that type of outdoor use, they also have food truck permits from us. But so they have the ability to do more if they want on that site.
Okay, great. I think that's all for now. Can you give us an update, Katie?
Hi.
About of the Mid Penn Housing Project. Do you know what the status is?
Yeah, so they they applied for a really large grant. I want to say their project, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe it was somewhere around like either twelve or fourteen million. And they received half of those funds and grant funds. So they're, you know, they've got their design, but before they go into their full, creating their building plan set for submittal, they really need to get those funds. So the they do have over a million dollars in funds from the city. And they're just, that's, that money is kind of on hold until they get the rest of their funds so that they can develop something on the site or develop the approved project, the fifty-two units. So I think my, you know, within the goals, I said, issue the building permit because it would be wonderful if we issue a building permit within the next year, knowing that they probably won't hear on, I think the applications are due soon, and then it takes quite some time to get those awards. So I think we would hear in winter whether or not they receive those funds.
And with the Bluffs, the thirty-six units at the Bluffs, what's the process of filling those units? Like, who administers the applications? Who determines which residents get the get the units? And is there any way we can prioritize our city staff for those units?
That's a great question. So when they came through the planning process, because of fair housing, it's really hard to restrict or put preferences on who gets units. So we were able to put a preference in for local workers within Capitola because it helps with SEQA and decreasing the your V M T, your visit vehicle miles traveled. So there is a clause in there about preference for local workers. We could, you can't get a specific of what business and you can't, you also can't say Capitola residents because a lot of people haven't been able to get into the Capitola housing market because of the cost. And so therefore, it wouldn't be a fair housing practice to say only Capitola residents.
And with the conversations with Merlot Geyer, have you guys talked about housing?
We have, yeah. We've talked about housing and just different avenues in which to get the affordable housing on site. And these days, you're seeing with more of these developments that they partner with a nonprofit such as a Mid Penn or just different nonprofits that are specialized in housing. So that's, we've been talking about, I think it's really important that the housing be on site from what I understand of the documents that we put together for the housing element, and they understand that. So, yeah, we've been brainstorming ideas on how to make that happen.
Have you been in conversation with Metro about building housing on top of a new metro station, similar to what's going on in Santa Cruz and Watsonville?
We have not, but that is on our, we've been talking to Merlot Geyer about the need to communicate, like to pull Metro into these conversations. And they they understand that that's one of the next steps. But and no, it hasn't been that specific about how, you know, to lay our housing on top of there, but just the fact that there is a transfer station at the Capitola Mall. And just thinking about where that placement is going to be in the future and making sure that they're on board because a lot of work has gone into that in the past, as Jamie can attest. And that will be a big step in the redevelopment of the mall is figuring out the metro piece.
And just looking at the budget line items for the different fiscal years, it looks like we're going to continue to utilize third-party contractors to provide building inspection services for the foreseeable future. Is that correct?
That is correct. With our, we have an interim building official now, but when our building official comes back, they'll be working in the office, and then we'll use a third-party consultant for building inspections.
Is the funding for the third-party building inspection services included in the one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand contract services?
I believe that is exactly where it is. Yes. And I think there's, yes.
Do our current building permit fees cover these costs adequately?
I believe the answer to that is yes. But if Jim, do you?
They do.
Awesome. Great. I just want to make sure we're not subsidizing, you know, developmental causes, related costs with our general fund dollars. Is the use of a third-party contractor or third-party contractors having any negative effects on customer service that you know of?
Not that I know of. I have not had complaints. We use C S G, and we we've got a five-year contract with them, a three-year or five-year contract. And to my knowledge, I haven't had complaints. So.
Is there any consideration in hiring our own building inspector?
You know, for the coming year, I didn't look into hiring a new building inspector. The need is really three days a week, full days at this point. But if we do, if we were to have some more really large projects come on board, so maybe in the following year, once we issue the fifty-two unit building permit, that's probably something we could look at. But we have had a good balance over the last couple of years of utilizing C S G as a support within our building department. Previously, they were doing our building reviews, what when we had a building inspector on in staff. But now that will flip to having the building official review all the building plans while the inspector goes out three days a week.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, to take that conversation a little bit further, on the Bluff project, that's contract inspector, that's separate from what the city's permits are, is that correct?
For the Bluff project, we, our, our contract inspector has been doing those inspections, yes. But it is C S G. It's the contract inspector.
Right, perfect. So some questions for you. So one thing when we talk about, you said that the engagement with Merlot Geyer has been a lot more and everything. Didn't we have a consultant that we're working with? Are they still on your, are they still involved? Or has their contract been expired?
That has, oh, go ahead, Jamie.
So the contract has expired. We still, we have hired them for other work subsequently, but that was funded by Merlot Geyer at that time. It was funded out of the developer deposit.
Okay, and that's, so that's expired, and we got our services for what those items were?
Yeah, the specific products that they they gave us, the economic development guy was, he did a pretty good, Russia gonna dust it off and be looking at it again here shortly, was a pretty good analysis about kind of the overall costs of the proposed development to the city. You know, if there's more people, there's going to be more calls for service from the police department, more wear down the roads, kind of that complete analysis. And then looking at the new revenue, it helped us estimate that. So that was the work product at that stage. There was other things down the road that they were going to do, but we stopped them after that stage.
So you're bringing that more like on an in-house basis? And working with Merlot Geyer, what could kind of work? I thought one of the part was they were going to see, like, from the economic standpoint, how is it gonna, how could it work for Merlot Geyer? How's work for the city? And is that something I'm understanding that you're taking on like in-house right now at this present time?
We're gonna take a look at that. You know, right now, the conversations with Merlot Geyer are really productive. So we're gonna take a look at seeing, you know, now that we have a template for one of these sorts of reports, finance director, I were looking at it. We're thinking that potentially it's something we can, we can work on internally a little bit. And if, you know, down the road, if this ends up being a big submittal, we may want to look at getting outside help. But where we are right now is, you know, we don't have a developer deposit to build from. So so it's really staff resources we want to rely on.
I think it's key, like that interaction and that, like, dealing with, you know, the person at the city and showing the excitement the community has to, you know, showing other than a third-party trying to be the messenger in there. One thing, Katie, I was wondering if one of our goals could be potentially, and I think, looking at workforce housing, like Councilmember Rock was talking about, has there been talk about like partnering up with the school district? And, you know, is it grant money or funding money or something like that to look at long-range term term that, you know, kind of knocking out two things at the same time, helping workforce housing for teachers and classified, and at the same time, you know, city staff or something like that? Has there been any talk about that? Is that something that we could look at as a potential upcoming thing over the next couple of years?
Definitely. It's actually in our built into our housing element to reach out to, I think it's the schools as well as religious facilities. But I did meet with SUST, the SoCal Union Elementary District, I think. It's been over a year though, since that meeting. And there's interest. It just always comes down to finding funding. But I'm due to have that conversation again. So we can definitely build that into our goals. And it is within the housing element goals, so it will happen.
And as much as I love the housing element, it's just to highlight that as, you know, like, I think there's just some things that we need to work on highlighting that we're trying to even maybe can't attain them, but highlight to the community that we are sensitive to workforce housing or or a project like that. And if we can track something like that, I think would be great. One thing you talked about permits, and I know you went through some numbers, is that a increase from last year? Are we seeing a trend up? Are we neutral right now?
You know, planning permits were down, I think about, I think last year, we were about one-twenty or one-thirty. And included in those are a lot of like tree permits, so smaller admin permits in that number. And I think that that number had had to do with some of the storm things that we were dealing with prior, year prior. And then building permits were slightly down, but I think that was a reflection of we had one of the large condominium complexes the prior year had got re-roof permits throughout. And so our numbers were really high for permit numbers. So that's the change that you're seeing.
Okay, thank you.
But we're still, I would say they're, they're extremely busy in the building department right now. So, yeah.
Right, but if they get multiple permits just for a roofing project, that would get a lot of permits real quick, right?
Yeah.
And then just to kind of, I think, if you were online earlier, we were just talking about the potential possibility of looking at kind of within your department, having a title of, you know, economic development or something like that, more again, just about messaging in our community was one thing. I don't know if you were online and picked up on that. Would be a focus I'd like to see. And then how does that kind of interact? If that does come to fruition, how does that kind of interact with the chamber or the B I A, like as a joint of a new business? Let's just say they, small business wants to open up on Forty-First, they could come in, say coming to planning, you know, they're coming to the economic development person, and then they steer them at the same time. Like, there's a B I A in there, so well, the B I A won't be there. But I mean, the chamber would be another supporting role. And so just looking at trying to messaging and how we could support. And so if the message gets out there, it's easy to work in Capitola. They have these support groups, and they have an active chamber, they're active B I A, and support people, maybe invite more people to come into our community and that we show like we're like, easy to work with. And so that was just a thing. And then the other one was, we highlighted, as we talked so much about Merlot Geyer, just to be also identify the other two larger projects or potential projects, the Red Tree and the Swenson Lot, you know, if we highlight those as we look at those coming on for future projects in the city. And I think that is all I had. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one more. Rent control. So what we're, you know, with the mobile home park, and we're going through right now, what steps are we taking to look at, you know, our mediation costs, our arbitration costs on that, and being able to support our citizens at the same time of looking forward to what does that really look in a long-term liability to the city and where we're going with that? Will that be, just trying to get your feel for a goal on how we look at trying to deal with that mobile home park as a concern and for our citizens and stuff?
Yeah, that's, you know, I think we all had sticker shock when this came up. And it's something that, at this point, I have not kind of looked into how we could try to maybe get get some of those costs covered in the future. So that's something I think we should be looking at in the next year, just really doing more research on that and seeing how how next time maybe it wouldn't be such a burden to the city.
And I guess question more back to Jim, are we allocated funds for that potentially going forward, even though it's in this calendar year? But are we going to have a budget for looking at those as potential, they're big numbers?
So for the current arbitration, council approved that, I think, at the last meeting. So that's coming out of this year's kind of operating fund balance. Going forward, we don't have any other monies budgeted for arbitration. I think this is the first time we've had to do this in over a decade. I want to say twenty-eleven, oh, twenty, was it longer? So so this is the first time this has come up. So I'm kind of hopeful it's a one and done.
It's our first year of underneath this new ordinance, right, that we just got put through. I think second year of the ordinance, and then this. I think, I think second year of the ordinance and then this.
Yeah, I think the ordinance has been in place, I want to say a little over two years, but maybe three. So they, they had the opportunity to do rent increases since the ordinance has been in place. But this is the first time that we've had seen such a significant rent increase and had to involve an arbitrator.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions. I hope you feel better.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Oh, okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. So, Community Services and Recreation Department accomplishments. We implemented our park space reservation permit system. So this is a, a new opportunity for individuals to reserve small spaces in our parks to gather that are under the threshold is not, not enough people that hits a special event permit. And so it gives our people the opportunity to use our parks and, and have a space for birthday parties. We've had a memorial service, we've had a few opportunities. And everybody's been really excited because it's reduced conflicts with the other things that happen in our parks. We have provided lifeguard services to event organizers for the first time. Previously, the only opportunity was to do contract services outside of the city. But now that we have our own established lifeguard service, we were able to offer that to anybody with, as an event organizer. And then also we have a new extended tower service season. So we provide seven days, seven days a week service from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then after that, we provide tower services on the weekend through the end of October. We moved out of the community center in September and into our temporary location behind the Obel Cliffs preschool, still in Jade Street Park. And during that move, we got nice and settled and we are still able to maintain an almost complete calendar of classes, which is really great for independent contractors because they were dependent upon that income and our residents had a very strong dedication to that space. It's a, not only social and physical development for a lot of the seniors in our community. We do have a very tight turnaround. We had to shorten the time in between classes and that's probably been our only grumble, is that they have to move a little faster out of the room. We hosted two events on the Wharf. The first to celebrate the reopening of the Wharf, but also to assess potential future programming for the Wharf. And we had some outcomes from that that I'm gonna get into in a little bit. We integrated the events that the Art and Cultural Commission has previously advised on. And the operations of those events have been streamlined into the department. And then at the last budget cycle, this time last year, there was a lot of interest in what might pickleball be in Capitola. And so I was sent to have to do a pickleball survey in order to start the community engagement. And you can plan on hearing more about those results at a future meeting. All right, so our goals for the upcoming year, we're going, we have focused on enhancing our junior guard program. We did some redistribution of the age divisions in order to enhance the instruction efficiency or effectiveness for all of our groups. Basically taking really large groups and bringing them down into smaller groups with instructors in order to make sure that we're really meeting the youth at their physical skill level and hopefully enhance the overall outcome of their learning engagement in the community and ocean readiness. We also continued programming the Wharf, or we, sorry, programming the Wharf with Plan Two, fun, family-friendly activities. And I'm gonna get more into this in the next slide. The Art and Cultural Commission has some goals around events, which is the Makers Market, New Music Sundays and Dueling Pianos. And on the next slide, I'm gonna dive deeper here. So, like I had mentioned earlier, after trying out some events on the Wharf, came back to council to talk about what we might plan for, for this upcoming budget. And the takeaway from that was that there's a lot of interest in having fun, family-friendly events on the Wharf that really do community engagement, but that fiscal, fiscal sustainability, fiscal responsibility was a priority in what we do there. So, the current proposal that is included in this budget is to do Boogie on the Wharf. And so this would be a event kind of dialed down in what it offers, dance floor, DJ and a dance instructor that would make it really accessible for anybody to come out, enjoy some time on the Wharf. We're plan, the, the budget plans for three events in the series, all on Sundays. It is well-suited for all the logistical pieces that we were trying to meet, including the fiscal responsibility. So the total budget expense proposed, that is proposed in the budget is $6,000. And also as part of council's direction was to have, make sure that feedback was collected from the BIA and the chamber. And that was included in the process of developing this event. The Art and Cultural Commission also had some recommendations for events for this proposed budget. The first is a Makers Market. Previously in budgets, we have had the Art at the Beach program, which we had typically held four events within the series, having vendors come out. And so this is actually more of a rebranding. Budgetarily, it's unchanged, but it does have a kind of a new look. And we're gonna test out to see what it might be like to have those on the Wharf as well. Not at the head of the Wharf, but on the neck of the Wharf, keep them a little closer to the land and hopefully not experience some of the gusts that we experienced out there and see how that goes. The commission also has recommended the addition of two new events. In history, there were, there was music on Sundays that the commission had advised on. And so we're attempting to bring that back, but focusing on it with youth bands. So with the new, the new music events, the commission requested doing two and two. So two music events will happen. Both of those youth band experiences will occur on the same days that the Makers Market is on the Wharf, with the design that people might be out on the Wharf, on the neck of the Wharf, experiencing the vendors. And then the music will bring them back down into the village, into the esplanade. And hopefully they'll spend their evening there. And then the second one of music interests from the commission is Dueling Pianos. This is a very exciting music event, accessible to a diverse range of individuals. And we will be doing two events during this series. Both of them are happening on Saturdays. Kind of late afternoon-ish in order to get people in the village, having a great time. And again, hopefully they will stay. And so like I said, all of these events are currently included in the budget that you have been provided. We have been holding back on promotions in order to make sure that we get a thumbs up from council to go forward. So, and your key pieces at the end of tonight will be asking for an official thumbs up on what is proposed in the budget so that we can begin the promotional pieces that go along with event production. Next slide, please. All right, and then very quickly, last, public art. There was, there was a very big accomplishment in public art that the Art and Cultural Commission completed, which was the Begonia Festival Commemorative Public Art Project, as well as the commission had advised maintenance for the 41st Avenue signal boxes. And so that was completed particularly in addition to, there was a battery backup that was installed. And so those murals had been refreshed and incorporated the battery backup. I'll note for council that the maintenance part of public art does not come out of the public art fund. That, that resides in the public works budget. The goals for public art for the upcoming budget is to complete the Monterey railing public art project. You can look forward to seeing some installation happening in the next month. And per council direction, the commission will be receiving feedback or participating in feedback around that project. And then the commission has identified their public art goals for this upcoming year to consider projects on the city entry of Capitola Road to continue the conversations around public art for the park at Rispin Mansion. And then also consider a banstand weathering. The recommendation for maintenance for this budget is to do some professional cleaning on the 41st Avenue median sculptures. We had identified previously that it's not really within our ability to have our staff do it. So having somebody out there, the artist has been contacted in order to identify what is the best way to do that. And so again, that would be incorporated into this budget. And I believe I'm done talking, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilman Eric Jensen. Yeah, so I was, one of my questions was, and I think you answered it, and I appreciate that. So with the closing of the community center, you're still able to run the same amount of classes that you have, you're always been running? Just, you have one extra room up there, is that correct?
Yeah, so the, the space in the back behind the Obel Cliffs preschool has two classrooms. Our offices are in one and the other one we use is our community room. And we have maintained our building rentals. We have a couple of building rentals that we've had continuously, which is a really good revenue source for the facility. And then we have a complete schedule of classes. We've had to do a little bit of creative problem solving as it comes up with people getting outside sometimes. And we've used the community room here to make sure that, that we've put that puzzle piece together. But we run classes all day.
That's great. So there is no net revenue loss with, or we're not projecting revenue loss for next year with the community center being closed on classes then?
No, no, we, we had in anticipation of moving out in September, we had already planned for this budget that we are currently in to see an expected shortfall because we wouldn't be able to maintain a class, complete class schedule. We are on target for this current budget and so we're doing status quo.
I agree. And then just a question about the activities on the Wharf. So if I recall, when it came to us, there was an ask for like 20 to 60,000 dollars for running events on the Wharf. Right? And then we said, let's, you know, we didn't want to, I think our council didn't want to obligate that kind of money, you know, when we have potholes or you have other needs or something like that. So my question is, now we're looking at running events on the Wharf and then estimated values, $6,000. And I was wondering what the trade-off was. And then if you could elaborate on what the interaction was with the chamber and the BIA on that? How that, I thought, I was understanding that we weren't really looking at allocating that, that would be more of a, let's say if it's special, a chamber or a BIA would be taking a more, an involvement and lead and trying to help with offset, with volunteers and stuff to offset costs. Is that why it dropped down to now $6,000 and they've committed to that?
No, the, so with the interest of fiscal responsibility and proposing the, the events on the head of the Wharf, staff looked at models that would get us as close to as the experience that we had when we did the two events previously, but provided less of a staff impact and less of a contract and supply cost. And so that's where we came up with the Boogie on the Wharf. Is that the, when you, when you have a DJ and you have a dance instructor, it's just significantly less than if you have a couple of food trucks and a, just those scale of events. And so a lot of that savings is just really focusing on, because if we were to continue to do the same model, that would have, right, there was a range of cost that we were giving you. And so bringing it down to an actual plan is where the $6,000 in expenses is coming for the three events within the series. My conversations with the BIA, I attended one of their meetings with staff and discussed all of the events that I've actually just brought up here with them. And they were all, they were very excited about the thoughtfulness on all of the pieces and the timing. And they did provide a few points of feedback that we will be incorporating. And then I had a, we played phone tag quite a bit with the executive director of the chamber, but we finally were able to sit down and have a phone conversation and do a round of feedback on what is proposed.
Great, thank you. Next one, looking at the budget, like I think it was 5,500 dollars allocated for food trucks. So is that, was that just wrapped up? Like, we aren't paying for food trucks to go up to food truck varieties, are we? And is there other things that are wrapped up into that when we look at those costs?
Yeah, so the food truck events, no, we do not pay, they actually pay us to attend. There's a vendor fee associated for their attending because they have the opportunity to benefit by being a part of the event. The others, the other expenses that come along in food trucks is that Monterey Park doesn't have a bathroom. So we need to be able to provide that because we're inviting a significant number of people there. We have a small supply cost that's associated with it. But then we also have the bands that are one of the main attractions that everybody is coming to see too.
Yeah, it's just like a couple of questions, like we're paying for the food trucks. I, I don't think so. So you just call a food truck as, it's the food truck event and the costs are associated with that? You probably have extra personnel that goes up there and does cleanup and stuff, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. It is a staff, staffed event.
All right, and then I think you touched on it and I only have two more questions, sorry. I'm just, you talked about modifying camp, the camp, Capitola. And is that where you're just talking about like taking the larger classes and making smaller? What, what was that, one of your goals in there were?
Are you questioning about the junior guard?
Well, you said, one of your things was modify Camp Capitola. Was one, I think one of the highlighted things and I was just wondering what that really meant? Is that just an internal thing on staffing or is it different times or durations or what was that?
Yeah, so for Camp Capitola specifically, because we are out of the community center, we're doing some modifications. Because that camp previously had inside space and outside space in the community center. It's this summer gonna be mostly outside. But we're really excited about the plan for our junior guard program. We are, so the age distribution previously had been very heavy of having the older youth in the morning and the younger youth in the afternoon. And younger youth need significantly more attention when it comes to the physical development and educational components of making them ocean-ready. And so having this very, very large group of younger kids is kind of against basic youth development educational concepts. And so redistributing the age groups so that we're a little bit more evenly dispersed between morning and afternoon allows for the appropriate distribution that supports the educational components without adjusting any of the staff.
And then my last question just is about the after-school program that you, that's ran for the daycare. How does that, I don't know if you call it daycare, but whatever, after-school program, how does that really work with us providing services? Can you just give me a quick overview of what that really looks like? So we go to schools and pick up students and bring them back and then they're housed over there for a certain period of time? And I was wondering what the direct connection was that to, like, or is that a lot grant-funded? Or how, does the school district share in that? How does that really work?
Yeah, so the, the optics of the after-school program is that the room that we utilize for it is on the new Brighton campus. They've dedicated a room to us and we are very gracious for that support. We started off on the middle school campus. We started off on the middle school campus years ago because it was a good opportunity and have maintained that over, I think, five years now, maybe six. And expanded to the elementary schools post pandemic. We have our vans and we go and we pick up students at SoCal Elementary and Main Street and we bring them under the highway and over to New Brighton. They do experience the traffic, but it's a system that works out really well. And that program provides for, our capacity is around 30. And the school district has been a very active partner for the entire time that we have been working with them for our after school program. They regularly contribute grants to the after school program as well as our equity swim. And past grant cycle, they provided us $36,000.
Great, yeah, thank you. Sounds like a good program. Thank you.
Hi Nikki. Speaking of Camp Capitola, I think as California continues to transition to Universal TK, we really need to also consider support for our four to five-year-old kids over the summer. I really would like to see this as a goal and I want to see an expansion of the little campers in Camp Capitola. We've talked about this before because these kids going from TK to Kinder in the summertime will not have care. And it's really up to the city and the local jurisdiction to kind of take that on, similar to all the parks and recs departments in this county and the other cities. So, and, and you know, even our governor in the current challenging state budget has continued to support Universal TK. And our cities will need to reflect and support our families too. I mean, how can we look into the budgetary needs to expand little campers?
Yes, we can definitely consider the budgetary needs to it. However, one of the particular challenges of serving that age group actually does not have a budgetary situation. It has a lot more to do with the addressing the age developments of, the developmental needs of that cohort. It's, it's a very specialized program, even in operation of what we have right now. It operates completely independently of the Camp Capitola program. And so having, having enough coverage and safety for that small group, for the, the small ages, it adds a risk factor that agencies that work with youth need to be really sensitive to. And you're completely right. Having programs for that age cohort is a scarcity in this county. It's really hard to find programs that serve that age level. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that it has a risk factor associated to it that most agencies are not willing to touch unless they are already incorporated into the California childcare licensing program, which we are not and we would prefer to not do because of the very extensive pieces that go along with that.
So how are we running the little campers program if we don't have that licensing in place already?
So you don't have, so for summer camp programs, does it have to have California licensing? There are very specific rules that indicate what we can work within, we work within that box. And it's not so much about the age cohort as to recognizing the developmental levels of that. People who regularly work, and, and it's the fact that we're also a summer season. There was a time, some time ago, where we were actually considering doing programs that were kind of falling around the OST program, the distance learning. And we were actually getting drawn into California licensing because the pandemic brought up all of this. And it, it's a, it's an extra step that can add a lot of extra expenses and a lot of extra administrative oversight. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be part-time seasonal people that would have to deal with it. It would be FTEs. And since we are just a seasonal operation and we are functioning within the appropriate capacities, we don't have to do California licensing. So we really need to be careful that we don't step into that area.
So you do have a little campers program right now that you're running, but because the numbers are within those boundaries or limitations, you don't have to have, to go through the licensing and the risks that you're mentioning, is that right?
No, there, so it's kind of two separate things. So the, the California childcare licensing programs are the next level of risk management oversight that we would move into if we were to continue to further expansion, the risk that we assume when it comes to working with children. That's, that's our next level of security. It comes with a lot of expenses that kind of go into that. The capacity that we currently run at with our littles campers, which I think that we just increased, we just increased the capacity. I can't remember what it is. We pulled some kids off of the waitlist. That, that number that we're working in, which is a current ratio of a one to eight for that age cohort is that kind of sweet spot. And just like the previous conversation around junior guards, when you get to larger groups of kids and you kind of have them all together, it just makes it a little more logistically challenging. We can definitely continue to look into the budget in order to find ways to further address it, but there, it's, it's a solution that just comes with a lot of evaluation that we would need to be really thoughtful. It's not a, it's not a situation where if you throw money at it, it makes it easier.
I get it. I understand it's difficult dealing with four and five-year-olds, I know. But as a working mom, as working parents in Capitola, we relied heavily on the little campers, Camp Capitola, our kids love it. It was, it's really challenging to get in when there are only a small number of spaces. And I've, I've said this before, we got in some sessions, we didn't get in others, and it's hard to have to take time off to be with your child because you don't have summer plans or, or someone to take care of them. So I'm just really thinking about, I really want us to be thoughtful about thinking about our families, thinking about these kids, especially with Universal TK. They're not going to be plugged into a preschool and they will not be getting summer care. And just because it's a hard issue doesn't mean we don't try. And I think because it's difficult and this is a problem that we will continue to see because these, Universal TK is happening and we're going to have a lot of kids that we need to take care of in this community, we need to look into this.
We'll definitely come back at the next budget meeting with sort of what the options are and the challenges and bring some information back because it sounds like it's a pretty complicated issue and there's a lot of facets to it.
Shifting gears, kind of, I just wanted to jump back to the boogie on the wharf. You probably said it, but what day and time were you thinking of running that event?
Yeah, so they're proposed for Sundays.
Okay.
And the day, the, sorry, the time is within that early afternoon timeframe. I can't remember the exact times right now, but the intent was to have people out on the wharf, get them having fun, enjoying things and still have time to spend in the esplanade.
And that would be held at the end of the wharf, not at the?
Correct, yeah, it would be, it would be at the, the head of the wharf. We would have, similar to how we had the stage set up, we would have a smaller stage with a DJ and dance floor.
And so no food or beverage service? And then, so that cost is around $6,000 per event or for both?
That's the, that's the, for the whole event series, three, three events within.
Oh, three, I'm sorry, the three. And then is it around the same cost to run a makers market or less?
The makers market, let me think for just a second. So the makers market, because those vendors actually have a vendor fee that they contribute, there's actually a revenue stream that comes along with makers markets. The, and then we don't provide, there's not a lot of contract services that go along with it. So it's just mainly supplies, supplies and staff that are makers market expenses.
Okay, and then I guess it would sort of tie in with the expense of the music that you'd like to do to coincide with the makers market? Or are we looking at those as separate?
They are, so when I, when I do my budget, I track them as separate in order to, it, it helps me to look at them as individual pieces. So if you were to look at it from the perspective that you're kind of taking, then the, there would be a small expense for the band that would occur at the same time or on the same days that the makers market that's on the wharf. And there, that's, those, those music have a range of, hmm, somewhere in the area of about $500 to $2,500 depending upon what's actually happening.
And then, okay. And the dueling pianos, can you elaborate on what that means?
Having never been to one, I can only elaborate on what I've been told. But the basic concept of a, of a dueling piano show, and you think of it as like a, like a show, like an experience, is that there are two pianos on the stage, much like the ducks battling in the old whatever cartoon. And that individuals come up and they put their song requests in and then it's, they trade off basically and you just have to draw and then the expectation. And it's apparently a really high energy, community kind of event. And there are places in the city that their whole bar is dedicated to this kind of thing. And then there are also these kind of traveling shows which we are contracting with.
Okay, and, and again, so the, that portion of the event or the music portion, again, no food trucks or beverage rack? Okay. Yeah, I think that was all my questions. Thank you.
I just have a follow up. When you went through those different, I just try to be sensitive that we have an arts commission that's involved, like I think you're probably the only department that really has, like one that is actively involved. So did you go through, like you have a budget and say, we got, we're projecting $25,000 and you worked with the arts commissioner on trying to break up those numbers on, we can do this for six and we can do this for four and do this? And has a recommendation come forward from the whole arts commission about how this moves forward?
So the, the work with the commission was during our retreat and goal setting, the commission identified what they would like, their public art goals, maintenance goals, and then as well as their program goals. And so through that program, goals came away with this and focus groups on what each one might be. And so meeting with the focus groups was kind of creating the vision of what these recommended events would be. And then here they're included in the proposed budget for council.
Okay, I just try to be sensitive to how much time they give. And so I was wondering, like, you have one advocating for the dueling pianos over something else and is that cost? And then you guys worked that out? You know, I think our mayor sits on the commission, maybe give me more insight. I was just wondering how that works. And so is it a budget suggestion that it's all, you know, from the whole arts commission and supported on how everything's going to be divvied up? And so there's a high energy around those things? That was kind of more of my question.
Yeah, and the commission, we've had lots of practice with Wednesday night concerts and so they had a lot of input to it and it turned out, it's like it's going to turn out well. I have no questions.
Thank you.
So we're going to take a little bit of a minute to quickly go back over some of the items and these are kind of the key highlights. I think we've talked about measure Q. As a reminder, this is this countywide measure, $200,000. We were proposing the two new public works maintenance positions to help take care of our open space. Measure S, that's the new, well, it's not new, it's an old revenue source, but there's more money in it than we had originally anticipated. So we'll be getting $165,000 for 21 years. It must be for library purposes. We can repay our general fund contribution for the Capitola branch, which was $856,000. The remaining 2.5 million is for, will be for future library project. A couple of other key budget elements we've talked a bit about was the pay stations. Chief Ryan went through this about trying to reduce our funding for repair and maintenance for the existing pay stations and moving into more digital payment options and working closely with the BIA on that. This has been something internally we've talked about, I want to say for like 12 years and trying to get ourselves to a position where digital payment options are accepted by enough the population and it becomes an option. The countywide radio project, Chief Ryan touched on this again. This is, it's about a $23 million countywide project. Goal is to enter into a contract for the entire county this, late this summer. So you'll be hearing more about it somewhere around that time. The final costs aren't determined, but we're estimating that we're going to be in approximately the $45,000 a year for 10 years. This is going to get us much better radios, much more bandwidth, a lot better public service, a lot better officer safety. There's a lot of real amazing benefits associated with this, but it is a real cost. So in this budget, we're proposing half of a general fund and half of this amount funded with the special revenue, the lease augmentation fund that's left. And also we have to do it because there's the DOJ, the DOJ requirements are coming down the road as well. So this is going to be to comply with the new DOJ standards. So even if we decided we wanted to somehow opt out of the countywide program, we would end up having to do our own program in a couple of years anyway.
So this next slide is about the reorg that we were proposing for the admin services department, combining finance, HR and IT. Under this, the city manager remains the personnel officer, so he still sees all hires, all, all important personnel decisions still go through the city manager. As I mentioned earlier, there's no salary adjustments or additional costs, it's just really a realignment. This will result in improved communication and efficiency as we trash, transition to a contract IT services. And then I also mentioned that they push to go to more online and digitized processes and forms, both internally and externally. So there's a ton of paperwork that moves between HR and payroll and getting all of that digitized would make life much easier. Again, under this model, I also have the HR section or division, if you will, of this separated out from the rest of us so that there's a little more, from the rest of the activities and admin services. So we have a more transparent way of tracking the Calpers UAL from year to year. So you'll see, that's why you'll see the personnel budget from last year was $500,000 and the share is 3.3 million is due to that right there. She didn't get a big raise. This also will assist the city manager's department by allocating the assistant to the city manager 100% and expanding her duties with, their duties as public outreach and community engagement and special projects. Reserve funds, I mentioned earlier that we're projecting our reserve contingency and emergency reserves to be below their target on June 30th of 2026, contingency by a little under $400,000, emergency by a little under $300,000. We still have about six, probably $800,000 of FEMA CALOES money still coming in. The thought right now is that cash comes in to replace those expenditures that we've already incurred, we could replenish reserves with a large portion of that. And then this last one for parametric earthquake insurance, I'm going to turn it back over to Jamie because he knows this very well.
Yeah, if we weren't bumping up at nine o'clock, I'd be really excited right now to go into details on this because this is really cool. Nevertheless, let me give you the very succinct version. We're proposing this, it's a $20,000 a year annual premium, kind of partially in the fact that we are underfunded in our reserves right now at this point as an extra layer of protection. that we are underfunded in our reserves right now at this point as an extra layer of protection. The difference between it and traditional insurance, traditional insurance pays you back for damages. Parametric earthquake insurance pays you if the ground moves. So it's like, if the ground moves, that's the trigger, not, I mean, it has to be a high degree of movement to get paid out. That's the trigger to get paid. So it's intended to kind of supplement and be quick cash in the event of an emergency rather than going through some sort of reimbursement process, which, you know, I think we repaired the wharf before we got our insurance payment on it. So that puts it in perspective. So we're partnering with other cities to do this. There's now five other local cities and it's a new product. And I think the city of Santa Cruz might be looking at it as well as a potential possibility. So that's something that's kind of new that we're trying to do. It's a little bit innovative, this budget to try to help protect us in the event of future earthquakes. Okay, so I think we've identified, I think we've gone through a lot of these identifying budget questions and we have a lot of material that we're going to be able to work on and come back in two weeks when we do our next budget hearing. If council has any other specific, specific asks or specific questions for more details, let us know before the end of the hearing tonight and we can bring back that information in two weeks. We, we will also be looking for, we are looking for some direction tonight on the new events that community services and recreation is proposing, just because they're hot to trot on getting out the advertising forum. And if it looks like a go, they're getting ready to hit, hit go on the advertising.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, but we want to get a consensus amongst the council moving forward on the events.
Yes, sure. Sure.
Absolutely.
All right. Does council have any other things that we haven't discussed already, which you'd like more follow up on before our next meeting? And we're going to be talking about the capital improvement program and maybe some potential grant application opportunities at our next hearing.
I would also add that the finance advisory committee held off making any recommendations this past Tuesday until I come back with the follow up questions. And then Director Khan's going to provide them an overview of the CIP as well. So though there, my guess is there'll be some recommendations from the FAC on May 29th.
Great. My couple of questions were just when we went back at the very beginning with city council as a department. One of the things in this budget, have we allocated money to completely fund the balance of the Jade Street Park that the city council previously has agreed to? Or when will that be?
So our plan is this, the Jade Street Park is the UA Playground Project. And you'll recall that the city council's put $450,000 in and there was a fundraising campaign that I think is dedicating a little bit under a million dollars. They raised a little bit over that, but the net to the city is a little over a million dollars. There is a funding gap in that. We are extremely confident at this point that we found a, a, a funding source that's going to be able to cover that gap. So we aren't proposing any additional funds and we are anticipating going to construction in the fall.
I just want to make sure that, when will we know? Because if we're going to look at a budget and we move forward in June and that funding falls short, that's a heavy commitment that a previous council made and a whole bunch of community members raised a million dollars for it. So I want to, how are we going to build it? I guess as a council assure that there's a funding mechanism, like if it doesn't go through, this is a backup plan. So we, we're committed to that, that project.
Right. Looking at my public works director, two weeks, well, two weeks we'd be? Before we have a signed budget, sorry, a budget adoption hearing on June 26th, we will, we will have, we will prepare to make an announcement.
Perfect. I just want to make sure. And then just, you know, I mean, I think these are the tough things about that whole project was, you know, the council committing to funding and then funding again in, you know, three or four years out. And so that was that. And then the one thing, other thing was for the city attorney under their goals and stuff. Would, could there be a way that the city attorney could look at a more transparent or maybe provide us input on how these PRAs are handled? And so is there a potential way of containing costs? Is there a more streamlined process? I know it comes into our city staff, but then I know they all get reviewed. And it seems like I shared again with that number last time. And I just think that should be, I don't know if that's really a goal of the city attorney, but maybe providing direction. I know it kind of falls in their legal thing. And so I just would like, want to make sure that that was identified if we could.
Absolutely. We can look into that.
I did see on page 48, under city attorney, that in fiscal year 2023, 2024, there was, there was a significantly more costs, higher costs in attorney fees. Do you know what, what happened that year? Forty-eight, PDF 50, 54. PDF page 54, but it's 48 of the report.
And to repeat, we had a number of difficult personnel issues. We had the labor negotiations, which was a significant cost. The city attorney's office model, they changed their kind of office model a little bit, which, which has resulted, I think, in a little bit higher costs when you go back and look at the pre, the years before that as well.
I believe there is a lot of legal costs tied to the housing element also.
Yes, that's right. Housing element and a number of new ordinances we did as well. That may have been the rent control ordinance year as well. That was a significant push. I think there was a lot of things that kind of came together that year. But the costs are significant. I mean, it's not lawyers charge a lot.
Well, I guess we do have to have a public comment. Do I see anybody that would like to speak at this time? No? Great. Seeing none, that'll bring us to our last part of German. But hopefully we'll see everybody at May 22nd at our next, next regularly scheduled meeting. Have a good night. Be careful and take care of each other.